Good afternoon. Welcome to the Portland City Council. It is Wednesday, just after 2:00 PM on June 22nd, 2011. We'll come back from recess. Carla, can you please call the vote? Sorry, the roll.
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Leonard.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Adams.
Here. Former as President, we shall proceed. We have one item on the council calendar this afternoon. Can you please read the title for resolution, item number 651?
Accept City of Portland Disparity Study Report and Direct the Office of Management and Finance to Take Immediate Action to Enhance the City's Equity Programs and to Bring Forward Recommendations to City Council to Further Expand and Strengthen the Programs No Later Than February 2012.
Thanks, Carla. Commissioner Nick Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor Adams, thank you for giving me this challenging and important assignment. Today I bring before council the final disparity study report for review and discussion. The resolution sponsored by Mayor Adams and me, if accepted by the council, does three things. One, it accepts the report prepared by the BBC Research and Consulting Project Team. Two, it directs the appropriate city departments to take immediate action to strengthen our commitment to equity in contracting. Three, it sets a deadline for more long-term work to strengthen the city's commitment to ending disparity in construction contracting and professional services. Today's presentation is the culmination of almost two years of work by the city, staff at the Portland Development Commission, and a committed and diverse group of volunteers who served on my advisory group. From our earliest conversations about the need for a new disparity study, this council embraced a simple idea: We can and we must do better. The BBC team will address in detail a number of fundamental questions this afternoon, including, one, what is a disparity study? And, two, why does Portland need one? Here's the short version. A disparity study is a legally required document used to defend programs in court which combat historic discrimination. Studies contain three separate legally important sections. First, this report and other studies utilize a statistical methodology supported by the courts. Let's call this the science of the work. Second, the report uses extensive qualitative analysis. Simply put, the team interviewed contractors and professionals to get behind the numbers, to the personal stories of how people experience discrimination in our community. And, third, the draft report was presented to the public for comment. All of those comments and questions were used to shape the final report which you have before you today. As you will hear repeatedly this afternoon, the report is a three-legged stool, and each of the three legs has legal significance. In the battleground that swirls around contracting, access, and equity in America, it is essential for us to have a disparity study that uses methods that are supported by the federal courts. One of the reasons that BBC was selected is that courts across America have adopted their methodology. And Jim Van Dyke from the City Attorney's Office will confirm today that BBC's methodology meets the applicable legal standards. There are a number of people I want to acknowledge and thank today before we begin. First, to everyone who participated in the public meetings, sent us emails, called or visited the project website, thank you. You have made this a substantially better report. While there are many people who put in long hours to create this report, I want to offer special recognition and thanks to the members of my commissioner's advisory group. These volunteers met five times, hoard over hundreds of pages of documents, and questioned and challenged the project team from the first day we got together. They were guided by passion for the issues and deep and relevant experience in our community. You will hear from a few of them later this afternoon, but I want to identify the entire group and ask you to stand as I read your name. Marcella Alcantara, a small business owner with Alcantara and Associates. Jackie Babaki, from the Small Business Advisory Council, Babaki Performance Partners. Jason Lim of The Asian Reporter. Penny Painter, from the Native American Chamber of Commerce. Maurice Roming, Namco, President O'Neill Electric, Inc. Carmen Rubio, from the Latino Network. She serves as the Executive Director. Rudy Martinez, Field Representative, Pacific Northwest Council of Carpenters. Nate McCoy, Portland, excuse me, Portland Bureau of Housing. Andrew Byer, LCG Pence Construction. Mayor and colleagues, these are the citizen volunteers who put in a lot of time. Could we give them a round of applause? I also want to thank this afternoon the six people that have worked so tirelessly to make this day possible. They are Jeff Baer, Christine Moody, Annette Palmer, Skip Newberry, John Jackley, and Jim Blackwood. One final note about the scope of the report before us. In our first advisory group meeting, Marcella Alcantara proposed expanding the study to include professional services. After an extensive discussion, the group believed that was the right thing to do. We knew it would add to the cost of the study, and we knew it would take longer to complete the study, but it is a much stronger study because of that recommendation. And, Marcella, we thank you. Here's the lineup for today's presentation, Mayor. First, Representatives of the City and BBC will present the report to council. The following people have spent a great deal of time working on the report over the past few months. Christine Moody, Chief Procurement Officer for the City. David Keane and Kevin Williams from BBC, who we'll ask up in a moment. And Jim Van Dyke from the City Attorney's Office. Our second panel is made up of members drawn from our advisory group: Marcella Alcantara, Andrew Byer, and Maurice Roming. Our final panel is composed of Gail Castillo, Andre Boa, and Jorge Gora. After the third panel, we will move to public testimony. Mayor Adams?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, and thank you for your work on this. Having been a staff project manager, one of three for the original disparity study, I know how time-consuming and important this task is. My initial remarks are focused on the handoff that comes with Commissioner Fish's conclusion of the study, and then my responsibility working with the team and with the community to close the disparity gaps that have been identified by the study. And to underscore the statistical results, the anecdotal evidence and the public comments have all provided us with the legal grounds to continue and enhance current equity programs. And we have the legal grounds to start addressing issues such as bonding, insurance, prequalification, capacity building, access to capital, and other systemic obstacles to the success of minority and women-owned businesses in Portland. Additionally, with the adoption last month by the City Council of the Neighborhood Economic Development and Small Business Strategy, support that supports such issues, addressing such issues as financing and technical assistance for minority-owned and small businesses, minority-owned small businesses, it will be provided through the new economic development strategy in a more comprehensive and coordinated fashion throughout the city. The City Council recently approved more funding to support these efforts as part of the budget, and we plan to leverage partnerships with community-based organizations that help small businesses. Immediate actions are of interest to all, and so we have worked with Commissioner Fish's office, with staff in the city, and consulted with others in the community. And immediate actions will include the following, as soon as we can make sure that we've consulted with the appropriate stakeholders and our partner organizations. Number one, graduate all sheltered market contractors by October 2011. Cease the sheltered market program as it currently exists and create an improved and strengthened program to replace it. Two, review and revise the contractor prequalification program. Require all requests for projects' specific special prequalification to be evaluated and approved by the Chief Procurement Officer before being applied. Approval of all prequalification requests, $250,000 and under, will be based upon bonding capacity as provided by Assurity. Applications for more than $250,000, sorry, applications $250,000 and under will not be forwarded to the bureaus for evaluation for additional prequalification. Number three, review and strengthen the Good Faith Efforts Program. Although the studies show that the Good Faith Efforts Program has been effective in some areas, there is a need to review the current program and look for opportunities to strengthen it. Four, review and revise the workforce program. It is known that a number of construction companies are formed by individuals working their way up through the trades. Now that we have an updated study, it is time to review our current workforce training programs to see how they may be opportunities for growth. Five, outreach. Conduct quarterly outreach events using electronic notifications of solicitations. Assist general contractors with outreach for subcontracting opportunities. Six, do a better job of forecasting contracting opportunities and make sure that, despite our best efforts, that we are actually getting the word out in plenty advance for minority and women-owned firms to be ready to bid on these contracts. The immediate actions contained in the resolution, what I just summarized, are intended to be first steps, but they're the beginning of what I expect to be significant changes in the way that the city does contracting. Raising the approval basis from $250,000 from $100,000 based on bonding capacity will bring some quick relief to smaller contractors, but we're going to need to examine the impact of any kind of prequalification has on the ability of minority and women contractors to bid on projects, and that analysis should be part of our work plan. I'd also like to point out that the need for change does not stop at the city's procurement practices, but extends to every bureau and every bureau director. Portland is a city that is striving to become the city of the most equal of opportunities. We can't keep doing things the same and using the same approach and expecting different results. We're going to have to think differently, explore alternative contracting methods, eliminate discrimination, whether conscious or unconscious, and inequitable barriers, and create a culture of equity, of opportunity, among all the bureaus and our partners. There is an immediate sense of urgency to this task. Contractors are already losing ground in a difficult economy, and we must do everything possible to provide more opportunities. With that, I will turn to Ms. Moody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor, Christine Moody, Procurement Services. So I'm going to start a little bit talking about how we got to where we are today. And as the background, as the mayor mentioned, in 1995, the city and PDC took part in an Oregon Regional Consortium Disparity Study that examined public construction contracting methods. The 1995 study concluded that minority and women-owned businesses were underutilized and at prime contracting levels. The 1995 study also made a series of recommendations that resulted in the city's adoption of a fair contracting and employment strategy. Programs we currently have in place resulting from that strategy are the Sheltered Market Program, which takes into consideration construction projects $200,000 and below, the Good Faith Efforts Program, which is largely a subcontracting program for projects over $200,000. The Workforce Training and Hiring Program requires apprenticeship training on construction projects. Women, minorities, and disadvantaged individuals gain access to training and employment in the construction trades. And the Professional Services Marketing and Outreach Program. This is to increase opportunities for MWSB firms to obtain professional services contracts by increasing access to useful information and removing barriers. It also includes a 15% of total points in our RFP are awarded towards diversity criteria. So the reason why we chose to do the study at this point is that the data from the previous study is outdated and may not provide a sufficient legal basis for, in support of the city and PDC's current minority business and women business enterprise programs. The new study evaluated the effectiveness of race and gender-neutral practices in public construction and construction-related professional services contracting, as well as relevant city policies and practices. So in order to do this, we did an RFP. And in April of 2009, a request for proposal for a disparity study was issued. The Evaluation Committee, which included community representatives, chose BBC Research and Consulting headquartered in Denver, Colorado, to perform the disparity study for the city and PDC. In September of 2009, a contract was awarded to BBC in the amount of $831,000. BBC is a 41-year-old market, economic, and policy research firm. They became involved in disparity studies shortly after the Supreme Court struck down the City of Richmond, Virginia, minority-owned business program. Clients include large cities such as Phoenix, Fort Worth, Las Vegas, and Columbus, Ohio. BBC conducted the 1990 Denver disparity study and provided support to the city of Denver when it was sued by a local firm over the constitutionality of the program. The Denver Minority and Women-Owned Business Program was upheld by the 10th Circuit Court in 2003. More recently, BBC conducted a disparity analysis for the California Department of Transportation, or Caltrans. The Associated General Contractors of San Diego and the Pacific Legal Foundation challenged Caltrans in court. The United States District Court, Eastern District of California, ruled in favor of Caltrans in a summary judgment and found that the disparity study was comprehensive, included extensive statistical evidence, as well as anecdotal evidence, provided substantial statistical and anecdotal evidence of discrimination in the California contract industry, and supported Caltrans' implementation of the federal DBE program. Over the past 20 years, BBC has conducted disparity and availability analysis for over 80 state and local governments across the United States. For the city and PDC studies, BBC worked with four minority or women-owned firms, three of which have offices in Portland. FM Burchan Associates was used for interviews as a minority-women-owned business. Group AGB was used for data collection and procurement review as a minority business. Montesi and Associates was used for interviews as a minority business enterprise. Holland and Knight is not a minority firm but has a local office and was used for legal counsel. And Customer Research International was used for telephone surveys and interviews. It's a minority-owned firm but not certified in the state of Oregon. The overall percentage of MWSB on this contract was 20%. So after we issued the RFP and we developed a contract, the study itself began. BBC began the assignment in the fall of 2009, and Commissioner Fish convened an advisory group, and he mentioned the members earlier. They met five times throughout the process. BBC presented a draft report to the city and PDC in January of 2011. In April, the draft report was released to the public. This opened a four-week public comment period in which a public forum was held and online comments were received. Public comments on the draft report were received in three common areas. Additional data was provided that was analyzed by BBC and included in appropriate sections of the final report. Statements regarding experiences or program recommendations were added to the qualitative material in the final report. And questions about the study approach were reviewed and helped shape the final report, and extensive revisions to the executive summary were made. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Van Dyke.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here at Jim Van Dyke's City Attorney's Office. I just wanted to give a kind of a brief legal overview before we have BBC talk about this, because I'd like to just take a minute and explain why we have disparity studies. I think Christine mentioned the Croson versus City of Richmond case, and that was a case in which the city had set some hard goals, hard preferences, in favor of minorities. That was challenged. That was challenged, and the Supreme Court said that could not be permitted, that public agencies had to ensure that its actions were both race and gender neutral. Now, the court went on to say that the public agencies could consider taking race-conscious actions, but only after performing a very rigorous statistical-type study, which we by shorthand call a disparity study, to show that there was an actual disparity between the usage of minority and women-owned businesses and their actual availability in the local marketplace. In other words, it was no longer sufficient for a legislative body, such as the city council or a legislature, to say, "We know there has been discrimination." As we all know, there has been discrimination. It was not sufficient simply to say that, to establish some goals, to take some race-conscious measures. Instead, the Supreme Court set what I consider to be a fairly high bar to jump over and over to demonstrate a kind of rigorous mathematical statistical disparity in order to permit public agencies to take race into account, to take gender into account, when they make contracting decisions. Now, as I mentioned, the study looks at the actual usage of minorities, which is basically a review of history, of what our historical usage has been over the past five years. That's what BBC has looked at, I believe, through 2004 to 2009. They also take a look at the availability of minority and women-owned firms. And I have to say that in the past 10 or 15 years, the courts that have considered disparity studies, and there have been legal challenges to disparity studies, have become increasingly strict, and again, have been raising the bar as to what constitutes sufficient statistical evidence of minority and women-owned business availability. For example, they have now said, even though some previous cases were not requiring this, the more recent cases have now said that the consultants must take what is called relative capacity into account. In other words, businesses, you just can't count minority ownership and say, "Well, I've got one minority-owned business and one white-owned business, and so the availability is 50%." No, you have to take their size into account. What size of contracts can they bid on? You know, how much capacity do they have? Can they take on more than one contract at a time? And so the availability bar has been raised. And it was because of some of these legal issues that our office actually took what I consider to be kind of an unusual step, was we participated in the evaluation panel when we took a look at disparity study consultants to make sure that they were going to use a methodology that was going to meet the legal requirements. BBC was affirmed that we were convinced we're going to be able to meet that bar. I have to say that there were some other firms that applied that we did not think would meet the bar. For example, they said that relative capacity, that is, the current size of my firm is, you know, cannot be untied from the previous discrimination I have suffered. And I agree with that. You know, discrimination may be the reason why a firm is small, and in the absence of discrimination, it would be bigger. The problem is, the United States Supreme Court and the other courts have not agreed with that approach. They look at what your firm is able to do right now, not what it might have been able to do in the absence of discrimination. So we look at the current size of the firm, what kind of contracts they can work on, and those are the things we take into account. Once you get to the other side of the study and you decide, or you find that there is some disparity, the Supreme Court says that in and of itself is not enough to take a race-conscious action. You first must consider race-neutral measures, okay? Only after you have decided that your previous race-neutral measures haven't been effective, and we've had some race-neutral measures, and to the extent that there's disparity on contracts, we can show that they're not effective, then you can get into some race-conscious measures, and the Supreme Court has said, "Those measures, you can undertake them, but they must be narrowly tailored. They must be directed at the discrimination that particular minority group is facing, and no more." So these are the legal hurdles we must face. We must do a rigorous statistical study. We must find actual disparity using what they tell us to do in terms of doing an availability analysis. We must consider race-neutral measures, and after that, we may take race-conscious measures. Now, so, that is the legal landscape in which we are currently operating. And having reviewed the BBC study, I am convinced that the BBC study would withstand legal scrutiny if it were challenged.
You make frequent reference to the Supreme Court about the issue of a firm being small but for historical discrimination. Are those all from the Crowson decision?
Those are subsequent to the Crowson decision. Not all of them have been Supreme Court cases, but what we do is follow the trend of the federal circuit courts that have been following this issue. They interpret the Crowson decision for us, and the most recent cases are the ones that we are citing to you here today in terms of what their requirements are.
And the Caltrans decision, is that a Ninth?
The Caltrans decision was, as I think Christine measured, was in the Eastern District Court. It is not a Ninth Circuit Court case. If it was appealed, it would go up to the Ninth Circuit. So it is nice, and I would say it's kind of rare to have that kind of test done, and such a recent one, on your own disparity consultant. But so, we're obviously very pleased that their study withstood legal scrutiny in an area very close to ours.
Thanks, and we're, clarifying questions are great. We're going to have an opportunity at the end of the panel discussions for more discussion, but to get everyone up and through.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, or you can sit here and I'll do it for you, because I'm not going to talk.
David and Kevin, welcome. If you'd both introduce yourselves, and then proceed.
David Keen with BBC Research and Consulting.
Kevin Williams with BBC Research and Consulting.
And we'd rather our team come up here and present today, but they're going to remain in the gallery. But Andre Baugh, Jonathan Cologne, and Fay Birch were very important members of our team, and we actually asked them to do something very difficult. As you probably all know them, they know this community extremely well. We were very fortunate to have them agree to be on our team when we competed for this project, and they each had very significant roles. And we asked them to kind of change hats and be, as well as BBC, very objective, neutral researchers and analysts here, information collectors, and then put that information together in the disparity study report. And I just wanted to personally thank them for the fine job that they did in an often very difficult situation of giving you the best information and best advice, not perhaps from their own perspectives, but from their perspectives as excellent people that can go out in the community and compile information in a very neutral, objective way, and analyze that information and present it to you. So my thanks to each one of you. We would like to dive in to summarize the evidence here, and we're going to take a very high-level look and then be able to respond to your questions. So there's, we won't be throwing a lot of numbers and disparity study indexes and ratios at you. We're going to really try to distill what this means, and I have quite a bit of experience testifying about these issues in court and defending these types of programs in court. And so I have some experience of what has been successful. You have had a number of programs that have had a positive impact on the utilization of minority and women-owned firms. In fact, a lot of the procurement and contracting data that we were examining was influenced by those programs that were having a positive effect. And so that's one of the things that we'd like to report to you, that it's when you made these efforts a number of years ago, that but for those efforts, things would be much worse for opportunities for minority-women-owned firms, especially as subconsultants and subcontractors and as prime contractors on the smallest contracts, that those programs did have a positive effect. When you're examining whether you have a need for those programs, then you must look outside of those areas of contracting to where programs did not apply. We found a few examples at the city, and we found more examples for the Portland Development Commission, especially on their what are called sponsored contracts, which are not contracts directly awarded by PDC, that they put some types of resources in, they have some involvement in, but someone else is in charge of the contracting process. We found outside of, in city contracts, outside of your programs, there were disparities for minority and women-owned firms, and for the Portland Development Commission on those sponsored contracts, there were very large disparities for minority and women-owned firms. And here's what a disparity means. When we looked at the actual dollars going to minority-women-owned firms, including those that are certified and are not certified, because we found in the Portland area, like many other parts of the country, because of the barriers to becoming certified, and frankly, some of the lack of returns to becoming certified, that firms that may have been certified have let those certifications lapse, or they may simply not go through the process at all. So it was very important for us to get an accurate gauge on the participation of all minority and women-owned firms in city and PDC contracting, to count them all. We found that not only through certification records, but through interviews with those business owners and managers of those businesses. So we identified firms that were owned and controlled by minorities and women based on the information that was reported to us. We compared that, so we measured this on dollars. We compared that participation with benchmarks of what ought to be given current availability. And when we examined current availability, we started with a list of firms, the best list we could get, that was outside of the, any city list, any PDC list, any state-of-organ list. And we, the information we needed to collect, based on the prior comments here, we were trying to get quite a bit of information on those firms and what types of work they went after, and what sizes of contracts they went after. So we could only do that through interviewing the firms itself, the individual firms. So we started with a very large list. We tried to contact as many people as possible. Not everyone was interested in answering our phone calls, or may have just not been able to do the interviews with us, but we interviewed more than 1,500 firms about their qualifications and interest in doing specific types of city and PDC prime contracts and subcontracts. This is a great source of information to determine what types of work minority and women-owned firms and majority-owned firms would do for the city and PDC, and what percentage of the dollars for specific types of contracts you might expect to go to minority-women-owned firms if there were a level playing field. When we found city programs in place, we found that the city had a positive impact on the utilization, and in some cases, we found disparities. Overall, we did not, where city programs applied. When city programs did not apply, we found those disparities. We found similar situation in the marketplace as well. So contracts that didn't have any involvement of PDC or the city, when we looked overall at the utilization of minority-owned firms, and we just looked at their revenues, minority and women-owned firms were disproportionately small, their revenues were lower than white male-owned firms. Our statistics showed difficulties in capital bonding and insurance for minority and women-owned firms. They could not, especially for access to capital, they could not be explained by size of the firm, that there seemed to be a race angle to this, to the disadvantages, that there were disadvantages in firms when they were trying to work as prime contractors and subcontractors on local public sector contracts overall, when they were trying to get local subcontracts. And in fact, the number, the existing number of minority and women-owned firms relative to white male-owned firms, we found that had been depressed after some sophisticated statistical analysis from what you might expect if there were a level playing field. So even in the ranks of people working in the industry that might then become business owners, we were not finding representation of minorities and women in certain cases that you might expect, given the requirements of those jobs. So this is a major challenge for the Portland area. This is not unique to Portland, but this is a, we believe this gives you the basis to do, continue to do what you're doing, but also look strategically at what you can strengthen in your current programs. Let me, Jim mentioned narrow tailoring. There are two parts of the U.S. Supreme Court requirement. Do you have a problem, and do you have a narrowly tailored solution? So let's turn to the narrow tailoring. You and PDC have had quite a bit of investment in doing things for small businesses overall. You have a number of programs that try to strengthen small businesses. So that is a requirement in the court decisions that, for you to go on to a race and gender-conscious program, you must have seriously considered those race and neutral means. In fact, you've implemented many, and we're not suggesting that you turn away from small business assistance. That may be very important, and many of the issues at the city and PDC can be addressed through removing barriers to small businesses and further support of small businesses. However, the study would indicate that perhaps those measures are not enough alone, and that race and gender-conscious measures are needed. So we recommend continuing those efforts, and that there is a workforce development angle to this, as well as a small business assistance angle. The city pre-qualification, if, we found evidence that not only was the pre-qualification system worked against small businesses trying to bid as prime contractors on city projects, but after controlling for size, it negatively affected minority and women-owned firms in certain ways. So this is a very serious matter. It appeared that you were denying the ability to even bid on work to minority and women-owned firms in an unfair fashion, and that your practices are not standard practices compared to other leading cities around the country. You should take a strong look at that. However, similarly to other markets in which we've worked, bonding, which is often required in public sector contracts, is a barrier to small businesses in this market, and perhaps even more so to minority and women-owned firms, that those bonding requirements, again, remove those firms from the potential pool of business owners that can compete for that work. Insurance requirements work very much the same way, especially for professional services contracts. And then finally, you have a sheltered market program, you have a Good Faith Efforts Program, PDC has a business equity program. You have a number of policy decisions to make around who is eligible for those programs, what's the real design and intent of those programs, and what kind of muscle those programs have. How many contracts go into those programs? How big are those contracts? Are they really developing that pool of prime contractors of minority and women-owned firms? So I'm going to turn this over to Kevin to give you more details. One of the things I wanted to just say personally, because I've been working in this field so long, is what's different about the Portland experience? And one of the things that, from the very beginning, was different, in addition to our great team, which is probably, it's at the top of the disparity study teams with the local participation of anywhere that we've worked, is involvement of the community that I think the mayor and Commissioner Fish set the tone for this, of this was not going to be a black box. It wasn't going to be a disparity study that was just, you know, going to be sitting on a shelf at the end of it with no community knowledge of, community participation in, that you actually probably lengthened the process by having an advisory group involved in this, and that was a very good thing, because that group steered you in some very good directions. I know you lengthened the process by the amount of public input you had at the end of this. And there's been as much public input out of the Portland community as any community that we've worked, and we've worked around the country. So you helped make that happen, and then the community took advantage of that opportunity to actually give a lot of input. And that, we think, between the draft report that we put out for public comment and what you have now, we believe it's, has a lot more information in it from the community and in terms of very clearly setting out the findings and conclusions, we got good feedback, and we made substantial feedback, and we made substantial changes to that summary of the report, and you see that here today. So in addition to our team that I wanted to personally thank, I wanted to thank our advisory group, which endured many hours of getting into arcane disparity study methodology details, as well as the public participation process, all those people who gave comments. Kevin?
So, as Dave mentioned, disparity, one of the key components of the statistical part of a disparity study is comparing the relative utilization and availability. And so for utilization, we looked at five years of data for both the city and PDC, and as was mentioned earlier, we expanded the scope of the contracts that we looked at for the city to include professional services based on the recommendations of Commissioner Fish's advisory group. So when we set out to do these studies, we worked very closely with staff at PDC and the city to collect that data and to make sure that we have all of the information we need. We also conduct utilization interviews, where we attempt to contact all of the firms that were utilized in the scope of the study during the study period, and talk with them about their primary line of work, how they do business, and what their ownership status is, whether they're minority or women-owned.
Turning quickly to availability, because we compare utilization with availability, and again, we're especially interested in the results when no programs applied. There's many purposes of an availability analysis. Sometimes availability studies are used to set goals. In federal programs, that's often what an availability analysis does. Annual goals, such as the, under the federal DBE program, you could do availability, have availability information to set project goals. So here's a particular project, should we set a 25% MBE, WBE, possibly ESV goal on it, or a 15% goal, that's another use of availability analysis. What we used availability analysis for in our study, which is a requirement that Jim described, is provide a benchmark according to the court decisions that we had in front of us, and say, if there were a level playing field among the firms available today, what percentage of the dollars would you expect for this set of contracts to go to minority and women-owned firms? We believe that the courts direct us to do this in a certain way, and take the types of work and the sizes of those contracts, and whether they're prime contractors, subcontracts, into account when we're determining that availability, when we're setting that benchmark for the purposes only of the disparity analysis. There may be a lot more flexibility when you're thinking about a goal, especially a project goal, than the way we describe it here. So for the purposes of, you know, figuring out whether there's a disparity in past city contracting, especially when no programs applied, we needed a way of collecting information on minority, women, and majority-owned firms, and what sizes of projects they do, and what types of work they do, without knowing necessarily which firms were minority and majority and women-owned when we started. So we started with the most comprehensive database that we could, which was done in Bradstreet. We, the information that we used to determine if they were available, qualified, and interested, all the terms the Supreme Court used in the Croson decision, we determined whether they were available for that work. In our view, you can only know that by talking with the firm. That's only, you only know the sizes of work they bid on, for example, if you talk to the firm about that, because you can't just use bidding on city contracts as your measure of that, because I've already told you, your prequalification process works against minority and women-owned firms. So you can't use a city list, you have to have some, we thought the best information was from the firm owners themselves. That's what we did. One of the things that the advisory group has brought up, and brought to our attention, is something that we think is a challenge in any of this type of research, is to get enough firms participating in those interviews to have a statistically valid pool of firms at the end, with no bias toward or against minority and women-owned firms. And our team members and members of the advisory group correctly pointed out that some of the firms that might have been included in the availability analysis weren't. We went back and looked at that, and those firms, many of those firms are firms that we tried to contact, and for one reason or another, we never got a hold of, or they declined to participate in those interviews. We found no evidence, and we looked very carefully at this, that our analysis favored minority and women-owned firms being counted in the pool, or disfavored minority and women-owned firms to be counted in the pool. This is a neutral process, it's a process we used in the Caltrans study that was recently upheld, or the program was recently upheld in court, and it's very similar to methodology that other consultants have used, that have survived a challenge in the courts, where they start with the Dun &amp; Bradstreet list, which is a neutral list, and base availability on that, rather than a government-provided list. So I wanted to comment briefly about the availability analysis, and also caution you that this is not, the numbers you see in the disparity study are not necessarily the contract goals you want to set, or maybe if you have an annual aspirational goal. They're really for only the purposes of the disparity analysis, and you have quite a bit more flexibility when you may be looking to implement a program.
So, as an example of how we calculate availability, we pulled a city subcontract piece for electrical work out of our database, and it was around $20,000. It was contracted for in 2009. So we looked at our availability database that we built from the Dun &amp; Bradstreet list and the availability interviews, and we found 140 firms that said they were interested in doing subcontract work with the city, that they were interested in doing electrical work, and that had bid on work of that size. Thirty-three of those firms were women or minority-owned, and so the availability estimate for MBE, WBE on that contract piece is 23.6%. And then what we did is we repeated this process for each prime contract and subcontract piece that we studied. So for the city, I think it was four or 5,000 prime and subcontract pieces, and then we produced a dollar-weighted average of that to come up with our overall availability Another very important piece of the study is our analysis of marketplace conditions, particularly in the Portland area. And the way we look at this is that it's important to understand how businesses come about, and so looking at the entry and advancement to these industries, and where people have opportunities to move up into management roles, and then eventually become small business owners. So we looked at census data, information from the American Community Survey, a number of sources of information about business finances and capital, and provided some stark results about the overall business ownership and business success in the minority and women-owned business community. And so that's a very important piece to consider as you move forward. We also gathered a fair amount of anecdotal evidence, qualitative information about the marketplace. So we did 60 in-depth interviews, our subcontractors helped us with those interviews, and these interviews covered all topics of what are the challenges in owning and operating a business, what are the challenges specifically in access to bonding, insurance, capital, and also about public procurement processes in the Portland area. And these interviews typically lasted an hour and a half or two and a half hours, and we got a rich dataset of information that's summarized in Appendix J of the report. We also, when we were developing the availability database, asked firms about specific opportunities and barriers with respect to the Portland marketplace, and included that information along with our qualitative information from the in-depth interviews. The third part of the study that Commissioner Fish referenced earlier was the public feedback. So we, we're one of the only disparity study firms that believes in releasing a draft report and then giving the public the opportunity to comment on it. And as Dave said, in Portland, we've had substantial public involvement, and that's due to the credit of the community, as well as Mayor Adams and Commissioner Fish for making it easy and accessible for members of the community to ask questions, to provide input on their experiences within the community, and to point us to potentially other sources of data that we should consider in the disparity study. So we had a public forum that was very well-attended, had a lot of good information, and we also took all this information and considered, added the public forum information to Appendix J along with the anecdotal interviews, and made substantial revisions to parts of the report based on the input from the community.
In terms of next steps, our recommendations to you, and we're heartened to see that you're already taking some actions, is, this is a lot to digest. I think the community has had a bit of time already to start to digest the information and come up with some excellent ideas on how to move forward, and I think there's some people here that's going to share that with you today. There are changes to the programs that you have now, that I think are warranted based on the information explained in the report. And as important as anything else, you don't want to say, well, we've done a disparity study, so we don't need to go, you know, we can check that box, we can move ahead, and we don't need to emphasize continuous measurement and evaluation of how well we're doing. We'd like to urge you to put those systems into place to accurately measure, including non-certified minority-owned firms and non-certified women-owned firms, don't count them necessarily towards meeting a goal, or count them getting a preference in a program, or participating in a prime contractor program. Those should be reserved to certified firms. But when you're accurately gauging how well you're doing in reaching, in opening up contracting opportunities to minority and women-owned businesses, we urge you to track the participation of non-certified minority and women-owned firms on an annual basis, so you have some accurate data going further. This is a program that we hope, you don't have to have forever, because we hope the problem goes away. That may be unrealistic, and it will take a lot of hard work. Another way of saying that is, you know, our recommendation is, don't be shy about strong measures now, because if you, you don't want a program that just limps along, barely helps firms, what you want to do is, in our view, is have something that makes a difference, so that more progress is made faster, and you don't need programs, you know, it's been 15 years since you've done the last disparity study. When we were at PDC this morning, one of the commentators said, it's been 15 years, and how much progress have we really made here? You don't want to be 15 years into the future and say, you know, we should have done something stronger back then when we had the BBC disparity study, I wish we would have done that. So those are my closing thoughts, and we're heartened to see you taking some immediate actions here, and even stronger efforts might be warranted beyond this.
Thank you, Dave. So adding on to what the mayor mentioned before, we have some immediate actions, and I wanted to comment that these recommendations came directly from the community. They are supported by the study, but these are recommendations that came through the public comment period to us, and there were things that we could take immediate actions on. The outreach, to conduct quarterly outreach events, issue electronic notifications of solicitations, assist general contractors with outreach for subcontracting opportunities, better forecasting, initiate bureau representative meetings, and look for alternative contracting opportunities as appropriate to encourage maximum opportunities for minority and women-owned firms. As the mayor mentioned, graduate all sheltered market contractors later this fall, cease the sheltered market program as it currently exists, and create an improved and strengthened program to replace it. And review and revise the contractor prequalification program. Our immediate action is, with the $250,000 and below, only requiring bonding capacity as approved by Assurity, and no other additional criteria. For further next steps that take additional work, and we are wanting to move forward and work with the Fair Contracting Forum, that is already in existence, other community-represented groups, the city bureaus, and PDC, to work on the restructure of the sheltered market program, the revisions of the contractor prequalification program, review and strengthen the good faith efforts program, and review and revise the workforce program. And so those are the areas that we are going to work on through the next several months, and come back to council with more recommendations in those program areas.
What do you mean by applications, 250,000 and under? Is that bids?
It's a prequalification application. So right now, we currently have $100,000 and over, you need to put in an application to, in order to bid on projects.
So, because we have a lot, how many people are signed up?
About 10 public speakers.
Okay.
I'd like to ask one question of the BBC consultants.
And they're going to stick around as well. Go ahead.
The universe of available contractors and subcontractors, is that everywhere, or is that tri-county area, or is it Portland only?
It's from, one of the requirements in the Supreme Court decision was, in fact, it was in the city of Richmond, and the Supreme Court scolded the city of Richmond for including Eliot's from Alaska in their program, and said you need to really study the relevant geographic market area for your particular city, which the city of Richmond had not done. We have done that here, and your contracting primarily goes, in terms of dollars, primarily goes to contractors and consultants within the Portland metropolitan area. That was the region in which we did our availability analysis.
Does that include Clark County?
It's Columbia, Washington, Yanhill, Clark, Miss, Multnomah, Clark, and Skamania.
Mayor, there's 10 people signed up, and we have two panels that we'll present quickly, and then we'll get to the other test. So if I could invite up the first panel, Marcella Alcantara, Andrew Byer, and Maurice Raming. If you would come forward, you'll each have up to three minutes, and as has already been noted, thank you very much for your service on the advisory group. We spent a lot of time together, they were very robust discussions, and it was a learning experience, it was a dynamic learning experience for all of us, and as the consultant team said, they benefited greatly from the questions and the feedback. So, Andrew, would you like to kick it off?
All right. First of all, Mayor, City Council, I was honored to be on the advisory committee, appreciated the opportunity. I'm especially honored to be sitting here with Maurice and Marcella to talk with you about our experiences on the committee. I do have a few points to ask you to consider as you work on this resolution and trying to improve the disparities that we have in contracting. I represented the associated general contractors as a representative in this particular situation, and Maurice and I happened, I happen to be president, Maurice was president of Namak, Oregon at the time, and part of our challenge there was to try to bring our membership together, to have conversations about how to improve the relationship and the dynamics between the general contractors and minority community. And a large part of what this study points to is a need to improve the relationships between the prime contractors and the subcontractors, and to set up a level playing field in the contracting community. I've had a long career, both in construction and education, and the first point I'd like to make is that people learn by doing. Earlier comments about the vocational education programs in the metropolitan area are particularly relevant here, because the programs, particularly in the central city, have essentially been gutted, and that means that there isn't as much exposure to a diverse community for learning the trades as would be beneficial to our industry. So we are suffering from a lack of diverse, skilled, excited people that understand what tools are, and why building is a trade that is both honorable and remunerative. People learn by doing. What gets measured and reported gets done. I would like to suggest that accountability with rewards get results. If you look at South Waterfront, with clear goals and public scrutiny, some large, well-known general contractors improved their workforce diversity from less than 5% to over 10%. Those with better track records came close to 20%. The unions were asked to get involved and to also get diversified. They also are working to improve. I would suggest that those who achieve the goals should be rewarded for their efforts with more work. What gets measured gets done. Practically speaking, to achieve higher goals on bigger projects, Portland needs capable MWE SB firms that deliver general contracting services, structure, mechanical, and MWE SB firms that deliver general contracting services, structure, mechanical, and electrical services. That's where the bigger money is. What will you do to create that result and maintain competitive pricing? Keep it simple. This morning, the City of Portland Water Bureau did a mandatory meeting to discuss the Water Bureau project on Interstate Avenue. It's a $36 million project. The request for proposal is 216 pages long. The response is limited to 50 pages, which is about double the limit set for many public procurement processes. There are 19 different criteria that are explained over eight pages. For those who submit, it will cost them about $30,000 to $40,000 to create just the RFP response in some unknown pool of general contractors. That's big money for all firms, but is a substantial hurdle, a barrier to entry really, for mid-sized and smaller general contracting firms. I attended the mandatory pre-meeting this morning. It did not appear to me that there were any African-Americans, Asians, Native Americans, or Latino contractors in the room. You will get a high MWE SB subcontractor and labor participation because Angela will make sure that the 35% goal is achieved. But you have already excluded some very capable prime contractors by setting the bar at that level and requiring that type of a response. Fifth is to simply say, to simplify the process. Reduce the paperwork where possible to create intermediate-sized projects rather than single-large projects. The Water Bureau project is a perfect example. There are a number of different phases, a number of different buildings that will get built. There would have been opportunities, or could still potentially be opportunities, to break that down into smaller chunks of contract, which is, incidentally, one of the things that has been a successful strategy for general contractors in trying to achieve better diversity among our subcontractors. Particularly as you're trying to grow emerging small businesses, very difficult for them to take on a $5 million piece of the project if they don't have experience doing that. Bringing in two different subcontractors to do $2 or $2.5 million has been a very successful strategy. So I would just hope that you would work to keep it as simple as you can, obviously, and still maintain the contracting rules that you have. Beyond that, I would say that the, my observation of the advisory committee was that people were very frank, asked very difficult and pointed questions, tried to get to a deeper understanding of what the statistical results were, did not simply sit and listen to the results. They really did want to know, how are we going to improve this situation, and went out and listened to people in the process.
Do you have a jurisdiction that you work with that you think is sort of best practice for this simplification?
Well, the, some of the universities and colleges have procurement processes that are simple, simpler. They will limit the response to 25 pages, for example, rather than 50 pages. Portland State University has had RFPs out that aren't quite as complicated as this. In the private, in the private domain, RFPs, I've actually provided RFPs to clients that are five to 10 pages long, and you work-
Maybe you could email me those.
I'd be happy to do that.
Great. Marcella?
Thank you. Commissioners, Mayor, thank you very much. I'm honored to be here today. I really appreciate the opportunity to raise my voice, especially coming from a country that if you do that, you'll be shot. Not kidding. So I, like the Commissioner Nick Fish mentioned, I was especially interested in the professional services. It is a challenge. It's a challenge because it's a, it's an elite profession when it comes down to engineering, perhaps. It's a science where women, as it is, you know, we're challenged continuously about our knowledge. So in addition to that, we're driven many times to take radical steps like opening your own business, to create your own opportunities, like in my case. With that in mind, I have to say and give credit to the City of Portland that they have done an excellent job of creating those opportunities for small businesses compared to other agencies that you may say, even the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, or City of Beaverton, and so forth. However, that doesn't mean that you guys are clear from it. And the reason is, is because you guys are the key to our success. You know, working with the Army Corps of Engineers and trying to work with them in federal highways, they said, and this is a federal program, supposedly to help minorities, small businesses like myself, to develop and create opportunities for us, their answer was, go back to the city and tell them to start you there, you know. And, I mean, this is supposed to be a program to mentor you. So if you go away, there is no us. It's so essential and important. The professional services is a key element in your study, and the reason is, is because we're moving from the fields, at least in my background. You're more moving from the restaurants. You know, many times I asked, why don't you consider the professional services? And the answer was, from all that in the past, was because the majority of you guys are on labor. We're moving away from that. We're growing. We're not two generations behind. And I may be a generation ahead, representing many minority and women. So for me, to help you clear up the road for those coming behind me is critical. So I, you know, creating a disparity study with the professional services, it gives you a better and broader perspective. Because just for example, if the Asian community may not be in your, in your construction areas, but they'd be more focusing on the professional services. So does that mean you discriminated against them? No. You created all opportunities somewhere else, but it doesn't mean that you just get rid of them because you gave opportunities. That's what it creates, those opportunities. However, I am concerned on the disparity study, because I don't think it adds up. It doesn't add up at all. I see the numbers where it shows the utilization and availability mathematically just doesn't add up, and it makes no sense. Just this morning, I was just talking to one of my friends here locally, and I was mentioning that. Why it doesn't add up? It just, it just doesn't add up. And I was informed, I mean, I was looking at your matrix about the subconsulting and how are we distributed. And your benchmark numbers in relation to the overall percentage of utilization is based on the availability. There is two lists in here, one that is availability, firms and unavailable firms. My firm is in the unavailable list. So that means it's, your equation doesn't add up. So thank you very much, and I hope that we can look closer to this, and creating a shelter marker program for the professional services will be a dream come true. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me, and I was glad to serve on this committee.
Maurice, can you state your name?
Oh, sorry. Maurice Raming. And there's a few things that I want to also go on what Marcellus was saying, is the fact, the matter is, that as we look at the availability numbers as far as what the study shows for African-Americans, for example, the total dollar value that shows for African-Americans for both primes, subs, and suppliers, both certified and uncertified, is less than my taxable liability as one company. So that's concerning to me. As far as how we got there, one of the things I've noticed as I was going through is 80% of the available firms, or, excuse me, 80% of those firms, they're doing work with the city and PDC currently, were listed on that list as unavailable to do work for the city and PDC. So when we're looking at the numbers and trying to determine what, what the utilization should be, when we exclude 80% that are currently or have worked for the city or PDC in the past, and we're saying that they don't count as available, but then we reflect them as being utilized, then that changes the numbers drastically. So I don't want to get into the methodology, because I think the methodology could be sound. I want to say that the implementation, when we have a company from Texas calling up on behalf of a company from Denver, calling up on behalf of, for the city and PDC, saying, we want you to do a survey for a half hour or so, and that company does not respond, at that point, that company is now deemed unavailable, and that's from their executive summary in the BBC report. So that's concerning to me, because they're currently working for the city or for PDC. We have people that actually helped write the report that are listed as unavailable. So I want to say, moving forward, if we're going to look at adopting this, that we really have to look at, what are we going to do to make sure that we actually continue to include those firms that haven't been included in this study, and actually do some sort of adjustment so that we can make sure that those companies can continue to work and continue to do business with the city and PDC. And so one other thing I noticed on the resolution, it referenced ESBS, and I don't believe the study addressed ESBS, so I was just curious on how ESBS got mentioned in a resolution that's pertaining to minorities and women. Thank you.
We'll come back to that. And Mayor, let me just say that, Maurice, the, the work, the substantial changes to the executive summary that occurred from the time it was first released until it reached this point was based in part on, on your involvement and the work that you did and the input, and we thank you for that. And when we get through with the testimony, and we bring back the professionals, we'll address, again, the point that you raised about availability and utilization, because it's an important point.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mayor, our final panel before we get to public testimony is Gail Castillo, Andre Baugh, and Jorge Guerra.
Welcome back to the City Council chambers. Glad you're here. Ms. Castillo, would you like to begin?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Thank you for having me this afternoon. The recent disparity study uncovered several concerns that the Hispanic Chamber would like to address this afternoon. First of all, we want to commend the City Council and also PDC for conducting this important study. As we know, in order to address problems, we have to have knowledge. We have to know where we are. So we, this study is an important first step to understanding what the problem is and hopefully addressing some of the concerns. The Hispanic Chamber supports the following initiatives for construction contractors. We support increasing the number of subcontracts. We also support establishing smaller contract segments. We would urge you to use alternative bid evaluations that focus on other factors in a bid, rather than just low bid, a more qualitative approach to what you want as an outcome. We ask you to please insist on prompt payment of subcontractors. We hear too many stories about small contractors who are not paid. In some cases, they're not paid for about 120 days, and this is not acceptable. This kills small businesses. We also suggest that maybe for some of the smaller contractors, that you provide some upfront financing to help them cover some of their startup costs and materials. We would also ask you to collect better information about the subcontractors so that we understand some of their characteristics. We have some information, but I think further information would be helpful to understanding what the concerns are. We would ask you to change how subcontractors are notified about upcoming subcontracts and encourage their participation in bidding. We need to begin, not only the city, but the prime contractors need to begin building relationships early on so that they can bring their teams together, they can start looking at joint ventures, joint ventures, partnerships, and other collaborative efforts. Expand the city's partnerships for training and technical assistance. Conduct more online training. Simplify the city's prequalification system. Increase the flexibility of the city's bonding and insurance requirements. In addition, the Hispanic Chamber recommends that the City of Portland and PDC utilize the cultural and technical skills of the Hispanic Chamber and other community-based organizations. Community-based organizations can conduct outreach to construction contractors to assist them to become certified and help them in their development. Work with prime contractors to conduct workshops. Provide technical assistance to contractors and help them grow their business. It's about creating capacity. Help the prime contractors increase their employment and promotional opportunities. In our, in our case, we have a lot of Latinos working on these projects. Most of them are laborers, so we need to make sure that they're moving up. And help provide additional financing to contractors. As you know, there's very limited private sector financing. In our case, we have a very small revolving loan fund. The city might consider investing either in our loan fund or other loan funds that are out there that are community-based that can help the contractors. This and more is possible with expanded partnerships between the city, PDC, and the Hispanic Chamber and other community-based organizations. We have to make sure that all members of our community have similar economic opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and an opportunity to thank you publicly for the work you've done in the past as a city contractor, helping startups and existing small businesses stay in business and move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Adams and members of council. I'm Andre Baugh, President of Group HGB, a small Oregon-certified disadvantaged business and minority business. My comments today are not about the disparity study, availability, or methodology, but about the promise of fairness and the fulfillment of equity that can result from the study before you today. As we all know, disparity studies are by their very nature controversial. The anxieties of equity and doing the right thing always enter our minds. Providing one or more groups, proving one or more groups of people have been discriminated against is uncomfortable and uneasy for a lot of people. However, that should not deter you from action or otherwise impede you in the ability to see now is the time to do the right thing. This country is littered with unused marginalized disparity studies. Minority and majority individuals have raised their voices about the outcomes combined with a lack of commitment by the governing bodies. This inaction unfortunately caused these volumes of disparity studies to sit on the shelves and collect dust. You can't let that happen today here. You must understand that issuing a disparity study does not solve the problem. It merely identifies the gulf between the promise of fairness and the fulfillment of equity. Other agencies have had more significant disparities and done little to close the gaps. To reach fulfillment, the city should not follow the universal quest for easy answers and half-baked solutions, but face the disparities with directness in action. The city has adopted equity. Today, I ask the city to adopt a strong commitment to the solutions and accountability in the pursuit of equity. It is only through these things that the voices will be calmed. That said, the city should first endorse and embrace a strong commitment we see in your eyes and feel from your heart. Your commitment will be tested. Do not waver because of the anxiety or the unease, but resolve to move forward in the face of these challenges. Second, the city should adopt immediately the resolution of actions. Additionally, strongly support prime contracting and capacity building options. That's your biggest bang for buck, prime contracting. And lastly, implement a good faith effort which, which only utilizes minority and women, and extend the results to include workforce, because the workforce, a truly trained workforce, is your next minority and women contractors. And if apprenticeship is not followed, and they're not trained properly, we're just, the availability doesn't matter in the future, because they're just not going to be there. Third, the city, the city should hold all parties to a high standard of accountability. Third, the city should hold all parties to a high standard of accountability. You must review your commitment targets annually for progress. Automatically make changes if achievement is not being reached. Monitor it quarterly and report it monthly to project managers. The city bureau directors, partners, and the city auditor should be held to the same standards you are. So your bureaus, the people that you do business with, the county, the state, the federal government, directors should not be allowed to have excuses as those excuses result in this easy solutions and half-baked answers. Remember, it's your commitment, it's your money, and it's your promise. I'm reminded what Martin Luther King once said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at the time of challenge and controversy." I would say to you today, the significant measure of the city of Portland is not where it stood yesterday in comfort and convenience, but where it will stand in five years on this disparity study and ultimately the fulfillment of equity, which is part of the Portland Plan. You have an equity office, and how you look back five years from now, not 15, but five, you'll build a test whether or not this disparity study is successful in its implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh.
Good afternoon. I'm Jorge Guerra, president for the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs, OWMI. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for inviting us to be here. And also, work for Samuel Brooks, chairman of the board for OWMI. He sends a apology for not being present today with us here. But I will read for the record a letter that we have sent to all of you, and also at the end, I will make some comments that will come to the point. In regards to the letter that we sent, we commend the city of Portland and Portland Development Commission to continue to search for information that adds and supports to minority women and emerging small businesses. We believe the following comments are relevant based on the data and comments on the disparity study. The number of minority-owned businesses in construction and personal services in Oregon, the city of Portland, and the region is small, determining the capability and needs of each of the certified businesses is possible and will provide an opportunity to track and support the appropriate assistance to those businesses, the minority women in those businesses. Using a disparity statistical analysis alone has a means of providing support to minority businesses, becomes counterproductive over time because the direction of support is based on moving numbers, not developing skills and creating capability. Accountability for each minority woman and minority small business outside contract is an essential function to ensure performance of outside contractors. Some city of Portland and Portland Development Commission designated individual must be assigned the responsibility for monitoring this. Conducting support programs for minority women and minority small businesses collectively fosters relationships that grow for all concerned. Fostering partnerships between minority women and minority small businesses multiplies the opportunity for growth and development. Supporting access to capital, management support, sales and marketing, utilization of technology, and networking creates partnerships that produce successful businesses. The city of Portland and the Portland Development Commission should strive to move minority women and minority small businesses to sustainability and well as well as our contracts. As it relates to the efficacy of the statistical analysis done by the consulting team, OWMI believes its efforts are there to create systems that will help to grow and develop minority women and minority small businesses. And OWMI looks forward in joining the city of Portland and Portland Development Commission in that effort. As OWMI has been active for the last 23 years, we have been providing to minority and women and minority businesses the support in different areas, technical assistance, marketing, access to capital. And we really see that that is a great opportunity for us to move forward, work together, and how we can help those businesses. Something that we mentioned in some of the meetings that we had is to all those participants is stay ready to be ready, and it's a quote-to-quote. Because if they stay ready, they can, they stay ready, they are ready to go and move forward into any job that comes up, an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it very much. All right. It is 3:30, and we're going to take a five-minute compassion break since we've been here an hour and a half, and then we will get from, come back from break and go right to public testimony. Proceed with public testimony. We call the public testimony in order that people signed up. The local laws require you to disclose if you are authorized to speak on behalf of an organization, whether that be for-profit or nonprofit. We only want your first and last name. We do not want your address. We do not want your phone number. Just your first and last name and what organization you are representing. We do find it useful if you're known for representing a particular organization, if you could clarify for us whether we're listening to you. Your own opinions are those of the organization you might be more closely associated with that's helpful for us. So with that, Carla, would you please read the first three names?
First three are Roy Weedman, Derry Jackson, and Melvin Oden Orr.
Mr. Weedman. Mr. Jackson. Welcome. Welcome back.
Pleasure.
Glad you're here. Mr. Weedman, would you like to begin?
My name is Roy Weedman. I own Bud Construction, a trucking firm here in town. And just to give you a quick history, Mayor, I've been doing this for 20 years. I've worked 10 years on the light rail, many projects at all the airports in town. Right now, I'm running the trucking on Highway 217. I've been out there for two years, so I've got a lot of experience. I network with just about every major contractor and trucking firm in town. With that being said, all that experience I've had, I wouldn't be able to work on any of these jobs because it's very difficult for me to bid on because I'm not African-American or Asian, which I understand, you know, the issues that, it's very sensitive with the social and economic deal, but it has an effect on us too. And so I got to ask what the intent of this study is because it affects more than just African-American and Asian-American people. And myself, you know, and others like me, it's very, very hard to get work. And if I hadn't been leased on with an outfit called Salt and Pepper, they're an African-American firm, I probably wouldn't even be in the industry. And so you're going to have to, I hope the continuity keeps going here.
You're all right, Roy. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. What the issue is, when you go to these big projects, the contractors have kind of found a loophole. And instead of going across the trades and getting a pretty good percentage in each trade, what they do is, I can only speak for my industry and then the trucking. I see it time and time again. They always kind of focus on the trucking. That's where they get their numbers and the flagging. For example, Commissioner Fish, I saw you on TV here recently on Block 49. And now, I hate to bring this up because I wasn't at the meeting, but that brings up the point. I wasn't even notified, and I actually helped one of the firms make up a bid proposal which they got to work on the job. And I was never even invited to the meeting, and from what I heard, it was all just African-American. And many of these firms repeatedly are on the same jobs, same jobs, same, you know, I mean, same companies are on different jobs for all the city, ODOT, Port of Portland, TriMet, where I can't even get my foot in the door. And so it's kind of created an environment that's not equitable. And so the only thing I'm asking is a level playing field, and I would like to see where the contractors have to disperse among all the trades and can't focus their numbers in one small area. Thank you.
Sir? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening. My name is Derry Jackson. I normally speak on education issues, but today I'll be speaking a little bit on the construction side, representing Namco. Namco recently hired me, and to be exact, James Posey recently hired me to help get a handle on what the disparity study is. So I'm going to help make some comments about that. And I should admit that, you know, we need to realize the importance of folks like James Posey. My understanding is James hired the first African-American female truck driver in city, and these are profound things we need to be aware of and celebrate, in fact, the essence of what it is we're here to talk about, the disparity. I'm trying to get a handle on where I stand on the entire study. What I know is this, in government, I've come to realize there's a lot to say for juxtapositions. Something is said, and intuitively you think something, but actually what happens is almost the opposite. So unfortunately, I am going, I'm looking at this report through that lens. It's not your fault. It happens from the national to the city hall, that concept of juxtaposition. I would remember, and remind us to remember the words of the 38th Speaker of the House, Thomas Brackett Reed. "One of the greatest delusions in the world is the hope that the evils in this world can be cured." can be cured by legislation." To my good friend Roy, who I just met, I shouldn't say good friend, I just met him, I understand his dilemma. And the dilemma is a real one. African-Americans especially have been pressed into some of the lower-skill set contracts. We end up competing with the same subset of people, so it's no surprise that you keep finding the same amount of people. The answer isn't in our education and making sure that we can get some kids also ready to compete on the other level. But listen, Roy especially, I want to share with you some things, man. These are some numbers I pull off of Oregon Economic Finance Forecast sites, and they're pretty bad, of course. It talks about our economy. It's down. One thing we could count on is the construction industry. If we do our jobs right, we in government should make sure that our billings are maintained annually, not when it's convenient in the budget, because by then, it's probably more expensive. So it's about how do we get there? But again, I noticed that when you look at our community, we're struggling. We're struggling. Poverty. Here is a study from Portland State. I'm not going to bore you with the numbers, but they're abysmal. And they say what we all know, that there are certain segments of this community that's really in harm. This contract, this disparity study, gave us the opportunity, not for another transfer program, another welfare program, but this is legitimate work. When you look at this, I want you to be aware of the reality. There are kids on the street with no hope, shooting, killing each other, thinking that that's what it is. No, they could be on top of that skyscraper as well, making some decent money, keeping out of certain other parts of your budgetary issue. I'm going to close on this point. Already in America, 1 in 10 counties, whites are in the minority. Okay? 1 in 10 already counties in America, you're in the minority. This disparity report, I think, might even be somewhat juxtaposed in itself. Not here in Oregon in particularly, but I'm saying we should keep this in mind because there are real people suffering behind these things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. My name is Melvin Oden-Ohr, and I'm counsel for Namco, and I'm speaking here today on behalf of Namco. First of all, I think I will summarize my comments. We've submitted written comments on the disparity study, and I believe that the members have that available to them, but I'll summarize that this afternoon. But I want to preface my, the summary of those comments with sort of the distinction between defensibility and accuracy. Earlier, City Attorney Mr. Van Dyke mentioned the fact that one of the role of the disparity study is to provide a basis for the city's race-conscious activities. It's actually a little bit more than that. It's intended to be a guide for the city as they go forward to make decisions about public policy, and so far as to the extent of engaging in race-conscious activities, right? And so that's what the role of the study, and so the question is, defensibility versus accuracy. Namco believes that the study has some, there are some issues with the study that we believe ultimately undercounts the availability of minority contractors. And so, and I'll mention some of those for you. One of the things that we point out is that the study talks about both certified minority-owned firms and minority-owned firms generally. However, this study does not explain how they concluded that minority, that non-certified firms are in fact minority-owned. One of the reasons for the certification programs is to make sure that any benefits that flow from the program, i.e. the goal of creating a level playing field, inure to those who have been determined to have minority-race persons in control of the entity. And so without that certification, the question becomes, how does the study team know if the firm was in fact controlled by a minority-race person? So that was one of the issues that we wanted to point out. The other issue was...
Could I?
Yes, sir.
Could I interrupt?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And I'll give you more time. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding the point, and I appreciate the obvious detail that you've taken and care that you've taken in sort of going over these issues. So is your concern that they identified non-certified minority firms and counted them, or didn't count them, or treat them in the appropriate way? Which side of that is it?
Right. It's not clear, and this is the reason why it becomes a question. Because if they identify firms that are minority-owned firms, but are in fact would not qualify to be certified, then in their analysis of utilization, they might count, oh, we use that firm. Therefore, utilization would go up. But if it's a firm that would not otherwise be qualified for certification, then it's an inappropriate use of them as a part of the utilization numbers. But without having information about how they made their determination, excuse me, we're not...
Sure. Would your remedy, then, that we would do that analysis of the non-certified firms?
I think it would be important in order to provide transparency into the process to show, okay, we can't, for example, if they said, we call the firms and we ask them the question, are you owned by? And then went through the process of asking them the sort of questions that you would ask as a part of the certification process. Who are minority-race people owners? You know, that sort of thing.
Thanks for answering.
Could I just have a follow-up question on the same topic? As we move forward and we want to track even more closely who's getting contracts, would Namco's position be that it's not okay to count folks who are local to us? We know who they are, we know, and we've asked those questions. Are we allowed to? Would you recommend that we not count firms that haven't got the certification? Or how would you recommend that we document that?
We have no recommendation with respect to whether you count them for, whether you count them or not. The issue is transparency. We just don't.
Do you have a professional, personal opinion?
Do I have a professional, personal? I know many firms that are owned by minority-race people who have, for whatever reason, decided that certification is not something that they want to do, primarily because they don't contract with the government. And generally speaking, if you're not contracting with the government, certification, going through the state certification process, may have no value for you. And so they may have a one-off engagement, making it not necessary for them to do that. So it just raises the issue. Thank you, Commissioner. The other issue is, while the study does have some anecdotal statements about discrimination faced by contractors in the private sector, there's not the same, there's not a sense of the disparity in the utilization that exists in the private market. We think that having such an analysis would inform the jurisdiction about how dire the situation is in the private sector in order to think about the role that the city can play in remedying what's happening outside. So for example, if you have a ABC, I'm just making it up, ABC prime contractor, and they only use minority-owned race, minority-owned firms when they do city contracts, but when they're doing a project right across the street and owned by a government, they don't use, in my personal opinion, that would show that they are discriminating in the utilization. And unfortunately, I actually have a four o'clock meeting that I have to hustle to, so I'm trying to get through this.
Go ahead and complete what you can in the time you have.
Thank you. Thank you. You're too kind, Mayor. The other issue that, the other issue that we raise is simply that, as a part of the study, they explain their process, and they do what we, what I consider to be a hybrid analysis, where they claim, they purport to identify the entire population of contractors that would be available, but then they note that 50, there's basically 50% of the people in that population who provided no response whatsoever, and then they proceeded to do an analysis. And so it seems inappropriate. They do mention that they use this Monte Carlo analysis, and I actually, I'm not a statistician, but I saw that, and I thought that was sort of funny. But I think that that's something that the commission should consider in terms of the ability of their analysis. Finally, there is the issue about the counting that they did, and I think it'll be clear as you look at the study, that there is a point in time at which the study team starts, and let's call that July 2010. They're counting the firms that exist during that time, yet the study period in question is the five years prior to that. During that time, we believe that there's the possibility that there have been minority firms that have come and gone throughout that time, who have, would have been available and could have been used, and unfortunately, that's not accounted for, and we think that if there was some mention of that, it would better inform the commission on, outside of what the actual ratio is, something that they might consider in terms of what effect has, what might have been the effect on some of these firms based on our pre-qualification system, based on our bonding requirements, our insurance requirements, things like that. And so let me, let me close by saying that Namco stands as a partner for the city and other jurisdictions in terms of trying to create a level playing field. We think that the disparity study is just the next step in this process, and we look forward to working with the city and PDC in moving forward to creating a more equitable system, level playing field, and those sorts of things.
Since we're about, Mayor, since we're about to lose you, I just wanted to ask you one question.
Yes.
When Maurice testified earlier, he said that he doesn't dispute the methodology, but he has concerns about the execution. I believe that his word was the execution. Is that a fair summary of your testimony, that you do not dispute the methodology used by BBC, but you have concerns about the execution?
What I would say is, the issues that we raise are questions that we think the commission should consider in determining whether or not you think the study is adequate. What Namco looks for is leadership from the commission and the city of Portland on moving the issue forward. And so I think when Mr. Rami says, "The execution," I believe that it's the leadership that he's concerned about, because that's, that's what we would look at as being more important than the study, is the leadership that comes with moving this, these issues forward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Is this, possibly make one quick statement?
Sorry.
Okay.
You don't get a second bite of the apple. Would be here all day.
The next three, please come on up, are James Posey, Tony Jones, and Gerald Deloney.
Mr. Posey, Mr. Jones, Mr. Deloney, welcome back.
Yeah, I'd like to go first, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Posey.
I think Mr. Jones is going to go first.
You were first to sign up.
Oh, is that the way it goes? That's the way it goes? Okay. Well, let me just say real quickly, my name is James Posey. This is not fair and balanced. You know, this is a 700-page document, a lot of complexity, and you guys spent the last, the first hour and a half talking to yourselves and the people you've already talked to over and over again. So there's a lot of things that we would like to discuss with you, and you're going to make a decision here today. This is not fair and balanced, and let me just say that from the onside. Let me just say real quickly, I'm here not representing in Namco, I'm the president of Coalition of Black Men, but let me just read what your disparity study says. There's, let me just summarize and say, there is no disparity overall. And what it really says is that really minorities are overutilized. And, you know, that's a real key point, because if you go forward with programs and we're already being overutilized, I don't know how you can justify that. The other real key point that I want to make here is that, as far as I'm concerned, you all changed the executive summary, and you smoothed it around a little bit, but really, putting lipstick on a million-dollar pig really doesn't change the fact that the pig is a pork. I'm just going to be real clear with you about it. When we start talking about 1.9, 1.9, that percentage of utilization on the part of minorities is going to be your legacy if you pass this agenda today. 1.9 is a reference to extinction. You can't hardly count that number. And so when you all institutionalize that figure in moving forward, you really are pegging future programs and future activity based on that 1.9. And so really, that 1.9 hovers over everything you do moving forward if you approve that document. Let me just say, even in those 1.9 statistic, you know, no black people or minorities own any fuel companies. We don't buy any asphalt. We don't buy any concrete or any rock, or we don't do too much maintenance on our materials. So even when you talk about providing contracts and work to minorities, most of that money don't stay in our communities, it go out to somebody else. I see my time is up.
No, you go ahead. I'll give you more time.
Okay. Good, good, good. Thank you. Most of that money doesn't stay in our community. So when you calculate that particular phenomenon and how it deludes the concept of providing work to us, it really devastates our community. And so you have to, you have to be really aware of that. This whole concept is of how this particular aspect of 1.9 will hover over our community and how it will inhibit our progress, because, believe it or not, everybody's looking at the city of Portland for a framework of how they do business. And as good as Mr. Andrews was here, a probably good contractor who means well, what's sticking in his mind is, he doesn't have to do more than that 1.9, because there's no real basis for doing it based upon the study. And at the end of the day, most of the contractors out here will not do any better. The second thing I want to say is, it's really important to look at what even your recommendations are, because they tend to focus on the symptomatic issues related to minority contractors. Let me just give you some idea. There's a lot of discussion about, I'm listening to your recommendation, insurance, bonding, et cetera. That was, Sam, as you well know, that was in the 1996 disparity study. Have you ever had anybody who do a comparison between the recommendations of the 1996 disparity and the current recommendations? Most of that stuff is the same. Nothing's changed. Men are pro to J, et cetera, et cetera. Then there's other suggestions in this study. For example, the Atlanta Joint Venture. There's nobody from this outfit you all hired that's going down to Atlanta to see if those Atlanta joint ventures are working, whether they're really producing any results. I know, because I have checks down there. Those things are a sham. They perpetuate the continual things that go on with these programs and these so-called throwing it up against the wall and hoping they'll stick and hoping to get rid of any real solutions to these problems. Finally, I want to say that, at the end of the day, there's nobody home watching these programs to make sure that there's compliance and that outcomes are reached. There's nothing really strong about compliance in these programs. And to your credit, Sam, you did mention, however, that this is not a program that's isolated to the procurement program. There's a war going on within the city of Portland. Your Purchasing Bureau and the rest of the bureaus are fighting against these DBE and minority programs. You all have to arrest that situation and make everybody accountable. And let me just say, finally, we would not be sitting here having this conversation today if we would have gotten rid of Jim Van Dyke 15 years ago. Jim Van Dyke has been threatening you all with suits and legal consequences for the last 15 years. It's not even been subtle. He's been hitting you all with that. There has not been any suits in Oregon relative to DBE programs. In fact, around the country, there have been relatively few. So to raise the specter of legal consequences, et cetera, and et cetera, really, you know, I can't think of anything more devastating. I think, I think if we were to run up and get the Ku Klux Klan and bring them in here and let them hover around this place, would that would be, that would be not as intimidating as the impact of what your legal counsel has done in terms of depressing you all's attitude, more importantly, your leadership about changing the dynamics that's affecting our community. I'm sorry if I took so long, but at the end of the day, this is your legacy, and this is going to be meaningful, meaningful for you, it's going to be meaningful for our entire community as we move forward. Thank you.
For the record, you got six minutes.
Thank you very much, sir.
I don't agree with your characterizations. I find them pretty abhorrent, but those are your rights to say. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Tony...
Excuse me, Mr. Jones, I have to just say, I have to excuse myself. I've got Speaker of the House in Salem I'm calling and other legislators I have to talk to about some domestic violence-related legislation, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Hey, good afternoon. Mayor Adams, City Council. My name's Tony Jones. I'm the Executive Director of Metropolitan Contractor Improvement Partnership. We provide business capacity building to minority contractors. My comments are, I believe that the study still falls short, and I think we're missing opportunities. I do believe that it is an improved executive summary... Uh, I do believe that it is an improved executive summary, uh, it points out, acknowledges some specific disparities in certain areas, but my concerns have been sort of expressed earlier, uh, of the broader issues in Portland with regard to economic disparities in communities of color, African-American communities and other communities as, as well. We all know that all these communities suffer from gaps in income, income and wealth, and I know that BBC says it's, it's taken into account into the study, but what I really believe is that, uh, the 1996 study in, uh, in conjunction with this study really gives the city and PDC leverage and a strong legal case, uh, to take strong action to address the disparity. And let me be clear that the disparity is with minority contractors, um, is with minority One of the other concerns I have with, with this study is that, uh, as a business service provider with minority contractors, one of the things I think the local industry has done is really been telling businesses, "Look, to participate, you need to get certified with RMWSB and be a certified minority women-owned firm." Uh, and so, what concerns me about this study is that, that tool, that database was not used, used to really identify who's available. I, I understand all the legal, the legal reasons and the statistical significance reasons, but I do think when you, you, when you don't use that tool, you miss the opportunity to identify firms that, that could be, um, considered as available to be utilized, uh, when you're trying to determine, um, what, what the gap is and what the, what the disparity is. Um, the other thing I think is important to do is to explore why firms with capacity, uh, but were not counted, were not willing to do city work. Because it's really, to me, part of the challenge, there's firms out there that have capacity to do work, but they're unwilling to work with the city or PDC. We need to get those businesses engaged and get, and get those firms utilized, so they can hire people from the community. A couple of comments I have, a commitment to change, um, one, um, I, I'm glad to see that you're looking at the Shelter Market Program restructuring that, I'm glad you're looking at pre-qualification requirements. Um, there's also been comments with regard to, and I agree with, with regard to evaluating staff's performance, including diversity goals in the, in their evaluations, to see whether they're hitting those goals to help hit diversity. And the other thing I think is more important, which has also been talked, talked about, is more than outreach, one-on-one interaction between either the bureaus and contractors that want to be primes, or prime contractors and subs, to make sure that the work and the connections actually happen, and not just general outreach. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, I think you just made a point which I want to highlight, and that is wondering why some firms don't contract with the city, and if you have suggestions on how we can adjust what we do to be more friendly and to be more welcoming, help us to figure out, in addition to what's in the study, what else can we do to attract qualified businesses to bid? So, thank you very much for making that point.
Sure.
Gerald Deloney, uh, let's see, Self-Enhancement Incorporated, the Portland African-American Leadership Forum, and the Billy Webb's Elks Lodge, number 1050, of which NAMCO did a great job of renovation about a couple of years ago, so we're always in partnership with NAMCO. Now, the, uh, last time I sat in this chair, I was part of the Coalition of Communities of Color, another one, that delivered disparity report here, which said that people of color in Multnomah County were doing significantly poor in all indicators of well-being that we take. And one of those is certainly economic development. And as, when we sit up here and we start talking about this whole contracting piece, we're talking about whether minority communities can survive or not. Because if we're not putting the money in, and the onus is really on government, this is where we're paying our, our tax dollars, I can't make anybody else or have any stick over anybody, but when you're a governmental body, it is your responsibility to make it friendly towards minorities contracting. And, you know, I've heard people keep on using this word equity. I want to give a little definition, it's real easy. Equity does not mean equal. Equity means there has been a disparity, and this disparity has been going on for a very long time. It's, it's been going on ever since Oregon was a state, Portland was a city, up until this very point right now. And there's nothing being done, so if we start looking at those past evils, being equal does not turn anything around. It doesn't help anybody. Level playing field, I don't, I don't want a level playing field, I want a very unlevel playing field. I want a playing field so unlevel, it tilts everything the other way, so that we can start putting money where money needs to go. If we don't start taking that attitude, we are never gonna get where we're gonna, where we need to go. Now, the disparity report that I brought with the coalitions said that things are getting worse all the time. If we compared this disparity study that's before city council right now to the last disparity, uh, uh, um, study that was done, I'm really gonna roll the dice with you, to guarantee you that it says, "Things are worse now than they were before." Now, when we start talking about legacies, that's not the legacy we want to live with. That's not what we're trying to push forward. Think, we can afford to have things be worse than what they are right now. As we know, within our school district right now, 45% of the kids in school right now are children of color. By 2020, guess what? It tips to the other side. And if the way that we operate says, is that we're gonna continue to discriminate, and I know, I, I know James used some harsh words, but he said racism. And whenever anybody use that word racism, everybody gets uncomfortable. But I tell you this, when you hear that word racism, they think that you're being divisive. But if you don't do anything about it, that's what's divisive. Racism is divisive. And if we don't do anything about this, you know, I'll tell you what, answer your race problem, and you start answering a whole bunch of other problems that are out here. Now, I'm sorry if I made people uncomfortable by using the race word, but you gotta answer the race word. So, you know, I'll end with that, that if we don't take the courage to do what we need to do to address this issue, it'll get worse over time, and we'll have a real crisis on our hands.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
The next three are Herb Fricki, Penny Painter, and Anisha Farquand-Pica. Oh, Peach, sorry.
Hi.
Hey.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mr. Fricki.
Not often you sit in the city and you can say "hey" to the mayor.
You can.
I know I can, Sam, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Fricki.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to, uh, speak on behalf of the Oregon Native American Chamber, I'm the President of the Oregon Native American Chamber, and, um, not just speaking for the chamber, because I wouldn't be here without the support of, uh, the Indian community, it's represented by several hundred tribes in Portland. I, myself, am a member of the three affiliated tribes from Fort Berthold, North Dakota. Um, and particularly in the Indian community, we always acknowledge our elders as the ones that really, um, support us in providing leadership roles for our community. I want to thank the city and PDC for, um, doing this study, and well as including us in the discussion. Study identified disparity in the use of Native American firms, but in particular, pointed out the lack of availability of Native American businesses that can perform in prime contracting roles. I think that was true for other minority businesses, as well as women business enterprises. We believe that implementing the recommendations of the study will go a long way to eliminating the disparities and start removing barriers to Native American businesses, and is particularly our goal as the chamber, the Oregon Native American Chamber, to assist the city in developing the resources and capability of Native American businesses. Because by seeing the disparity and also how the lack of availability is out there, we look at going forward by trying to increase that availability, what is really causing that, especially the inability to bid as a prime contractor. The chamber, we believe, believes that the resolution actions will improve access to contract and subcontracting opportunities. We support restructuring the Shelter Market Program to include professional services. We believe that the size of the projects in the Shelter Market Program should be increased, as well as providing more opportunities for prime contracting. We believe they need to establish quantifiable goals for subcontracting to Native American businesses, both for professional services and for construction. And moving forward, in a, in a positive note, we want to encourage joint ventures or teaming, particularly of large businesses with other Native American and minority businesses, and women businesses, and make that evaluation department of equal weight in the evaluation criteria. Finally, we'd like to see mentoring and developing minority businesses, increasing that availability for prime contracting, and are very encouraged to hear the city recognizes the need for developing our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And that's where I come in. Hi, everybody. I'm Penny Painter, I'm actually with Cooper's Zits Engineers, but I'm the co-vice-chair of the Oregon Native American Chamber, and here representing the chamber, for the most part, but I am a workforce development specialist. And this is where the apples grow, actually the seeds. I work with people that go into the apprenticeship programs, and that's where the seed of the contractor starts 90% of the time. A lot of people go into apprenticeship, they get into the trades, and they grow up through the whole system. The other thing that I have done is worked with small businesses, uh, especially minority businesses, um, throughout my time doing this work. And I'd like to acknowledge the things that everyone has said, pretty much. I don't want to sit here and repeat everything, it's monotonous. But the fact is, is that it is happening, and they do need assistance. And mentoring, I just love the word mentoring, because that really puts an umbrella over this whole cascade of water we have coming down the river, as we know our river is rising above its edges. And that's what this sounds like this is doing as well. I'd like to see, and I, I actually commend the city and PDC for doing the disparity study, because what I see that it brings is opportunity. It brings opportunity all the way around. It brings opportunity for the city of Portland to look at the policies, look at the programs, revise, revamp, and change, and everything needs that to grow. Everything, even us as human beings. And the other thing is, is it gives opportunities to contractors, it gives opportunities for us to speak with you today, and be part of this disparity study. Thank you, Mr. Fish, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your hard work.
I appreciate the invitation. And I appreciate being part of the system, and I do see that it is gonna grow, and we're, you know, we're all gonna work together, and that's what I'd like to see, is everyone come together and work together to start helping, I mean, not start, but we've already started helping the small businesses rise up and above and do bigger business. That's what it's all about. We just have to be real careful, and the one thing that I want to remind everyone of is that they are small businesses, and sometimes we have to really be careful what we wish for. I was a general contractor for 18 years, and I just kind of motivated along and did my business and survived and did what I had to do, and I took on a couple of big contracts and almost set myself up for failure, because of different reasons. But this is not the day, nor the time, to sit down and talk about all those really wonderful individual reasons. I'd like to do that in the future, and like I said, and I want to end this with a note of the fact that I would love, and we would love, to be part of the solution, and work towards helping, and, you know, the city of Portland, PDC, and small businesses, and bringing more Native American businesses to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Could you move a little closer to the mic, so we can hear you well?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Anisa Farquand, and I'm representing the Oregon Assembly for Black Affairs, the Economic and Employment Development Committee. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also Commissioner Fish for initiating the work to get this study, uh, completed. I want to commend the BB, is it BBC? For the work that they have done, and I want to say that I am here because of the loud outcry of the black community, the minority community, that here we are again, 1995, and we're still dealing with the same disparate issues. We can do better than that. There are a number of ideas that came out of the report. I encourage the commission to take those ideas that are positive, take former Vicatia's, Governor Vicatia's message, just do it. If there are people blocking, people who are responsible for letting procurement contracts, if they are gatekeepers, if they are barriers, remove them, and let's get this city running. We have to do it together, we have to be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you all, appreciate it.
Next three are Maxine Fitzpatrick, James Faison, and Mark Matthews.
Welcome, thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Ms. Fitzpatrick, would you like to go first, please?
Love to, thank you. Um, good day, Mayor and Council, um, I'm glad to be here to offer these comments. Of course, uh, I have some prepared statements regarding the disparity, the draft disparity In consideration of the vast disparities that exist in the city of Portland for ethnic and racial minorities in the areas of economic development, education, health, housing, civic engagement and leadership, my initial thought on this matter is, what is it going to take for us to holistically address these disparities in the city of Portland? To simply provide justification for their existence is not a solution, it's an excuse. Today, I'm here to speak as a member of the Portland African-American Leadership Forum, and on behalf of an associate organization, the National Association, the National Association of Minority Contractors of Oregon, commonly known as NAMCO. Construction-related activities are only a portion of the work I do professionally. However, an overarching goal in my work is advocacy and the inclusion of all community residents in the American dream of prosperity. I'm here today specifically representing the African-American population, as well as other minorities. We're all aware of the numerous inadequacies that exist in economic opportunities for all in the city of Portland. Minorities have historically been left out of the mainstream economy for many reasons, including disparate treatment, something I believe may be at the core of the problem. With the current disparity study, which is the topic of the meeting, um, the city has positioned itself in a proclaimed defensible, yet in my opinion, an inexcusable situation of exclusion. NAMCO and others are challenging the methodology. They have been more vested in the process, and those of us who have not, respectfully rely on their conclusions. I don't believe the resolution of this historical discrepancy can be satisfied with explanations and justifications. I urge the city to consider recommendations that can help alleviate the problem, as advanced by NAMCO and others directly involved in the construction industry. I further urge you to consider working with them and others such as priority builders, to answer the vast array of questions and concerns posed in a, in Ron White's letter dated May 13 to John Jackley and Christine Modine. I believe we all know that the past does not have to be the future, unless we want it to be. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Kind regards, Maxine Fitzpatrick.
Thanks, Ms. Fitzpatrick. Sir?
Good afternoon, my name is James Faison, my company is Faison Construction. Apologize for not having this group, but I come here speaking as, as, uh, representing contractors. Um, first of all, I won't beat a, a dead horse on the disparity study, but, uh, the disparity study was supposed to have been polled, it was put out for minority contractors, black contractors, and I'm in a huge organization, which is NAMCO, that has a, a tremendous backing on minority contractors, and I bet if you polled that, those contractors, you'll find that 75% of them guys wasn't contacted, you know? So, how do you, how do you, God, figure on capacity? So how do you, how do you figure on capacity, or how do you figure on where minorities have been utilized? So I think that disparity study is highly skewed, and it needs to be looked at as such. Secondly, looking at some of the programs like PDC and the city's programs, I think there's a number of things that needs to be changed. You need to look at how you're implementing jobs, and some of the things, the way you're implementing jobs is on low bid. Low bid does not work. If you look over history, a low bid, all that does is put people out of business. People try to bid down in the basement and they go out of business. So you have to look at many ways that you can help minority contractors, or it's helping them figure out how they can get financing. You find organizations like Awami that has helped minority contractors get money so they can do their projects and fund their projects, and they have to go out to organizations outside of the city or the county to get help, to help fund organizations for its projects. There are a lot of big contractors in this city, but they need a hand up. And so I think you should look at those things. Low bid doesn't work. You need to look at the contractors they're working with, making sure that they are monitored on the jobs they do, and also you need to make sure that the people that do the bidding are doing their minority participation, and it's monitored. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Good afternoon, Sam Mayor and the board. I'm Mark, the president of NAMAC, and Awami, as a lot of them call. I've had a lot of input of going to these meetings and talking about it, and we're really deep and passionate about the disparity study and how unfair it is to all of us as minorities. And I do hope that you take a real good look at what you guys are doing far as making your decisions. And I think when we first had the first meeting, we discussed how I am a minority contractor in Portland and an ESB contractor in Portland, and time and time again, when you did the disparity on minorities and women are getting underutilized, I keep seeing the ESB pop up. And it's like you talk about how to utilize the minorities, but the ESBS, and I'm an ESB, I don't get used as an ESB in Portland, but the ESBS are overtaking the economy far as us as minorities getting a hand up. We don't get a hand up, we don't even get a chance. And I think keeping the ESB piece in there is really going to make it even, we won't make any ground on where we're going to go with this far as in the next five years, next 10 years. And I think it should be something hardly looked at, and really give the minority and women a fair chance of trying to grow their business here in Portland and making a success of it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much.
The last person who signed up is Andrew Colas.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to thank you all for having me here, and thank you for your service. Know that all of you guys work hard and tirelessly, and a lot of times you don't get thanked for the service that you do for our good city, but I want to thank you all. And I'm here representing Colas Construction, that's my construction company. I'm also a board member with NAMCO, and I'm also Portland Housing Bureau Commissioner. So I'm kind of wearing three hats here, but the main hat that I'm wearing here is I'm an Oregonian. I was born and raised here. I love Portland, it's a city that I'm proud to be a part of. And one of the things that I want to talk about is the numbers in the disparity study. That's something that I helped with assistance of the NAMAC board. I created the chart that we've provided to all of you. And it's really important, I understand there's three legs to the disparity study, but one of the legs, and I've talked to Commissioner Fish, and I want to thank you for having me and, you know, talking through this whole process with me. I think you've done a good job with that, and I think at the Portland Housing Bureau, we have a great board, and I think that's going to help move Portland to the next stage, and that's what we're all trying to do. In regards to the BBC, I understand they're a consultant that the city hired, and there's just, in my opinion, statistical flaws with the way they gathered the availability. An example of that is my company, I feel like we're a well-known company. My older sister's a PDC Commissioner, you know, very active as well, and our company wasn't, not only on the unavailable list, we weren't even unavailable to be unavailable. So we weren't contacted, we weren't a company that was used in the sample size, and when I look at the data over that five-year period, our company did more volume than it says all African-American companies did over that period of time. So that just goes to show you how skewed the availability data is. And that's something that's really important, because I understand that it's, in the executive summary, you've done a really good job redoing the executive summary, but when it comes down to data, people always want to see numbers. And that's just something that I get afraid about, because while we have a great commission and we have a great mayor, I keep on saying, what happens when you guys aren't here to represent our city? What happens when the next group comes and maybe they aren't as compassionate and passionate about seeing this city move forward? So I keep on going back to the numbers. And one of the other things I want to just point out, the apples-to-apples comparison, I understand they're trying to have an apples-to-apples comparison with the majority firms and the minority firms, but if it was apples-to-apples, we would have no disparity in the first place. So it really isn't something that we can look at as apples-to-apples. When you leave out certain large minority firms from the data, it really skews the data, because you might miss some majority firms, and it would not have the same impact as if you missed some of the larger minority firms. So I would just like to urge you to keep that in mind. I know you guys are going to have to make a decision today, and whether or not this passes or doesn't pass, let's just all be prudent in driving this forward. I have, I'm the second generation in my company. I remember a lot of the gentlemen that have spoken before you here today, being a little kid and hearing them talking about the same thing in 1995. And my father said, don't worry, once you come and take over the company, we're not going to be dealing with these same issues. And I'm seeing these same issues coming to surface today, and I have the next generation of our company that I'm hoping that we don't have to deal with the same issue. So please continue to be diligent, and let's all work together to move forward, and hopefully the next generation isn't talking about the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have the consultants and Christine come back up? Go through some of the questions raised? Good. So if we could have the BBC folks come up and Ms. Moody come up? Who's been keeping notes?
Keeping notes?
I wanted to air out your reaction to some of the concerns that have been raised, and I guess maybe starting with how the definition of availability was defined, and then how the, why in the search for those that might be available, some were left off the list, or?
That's a very good question, and again, this is something throughout the course of the disparity study, we had extensive discussions with people on our advisory group, and this was, questions that were raised as part of the public comment period. And it's, I might start out by saying it's a bit counterintuitive, and if the city had hired us to get the most complete list of all the minority-owned firms or women-owned firms that were in Portland, we would have done the research a different way. And I think a lot of the concerns and a lot of the questions are very appropriate and very valid. They said, if you're trying to get the biggest list of minority-owned firms, why did you do it the way you did? Why didn't you look at the certification directory? Why didn't you look at the NAMCO list? And the response is, we weren't trying to get the biggest list of any type of firm, we're trying to get the percentage of firms that were minority and women-owned from a neutral perspective, not starting with membership in a particular minority contractors association or membership in a certification directory. We were trying to take an outside view and say, we have the same way of counting firms that are majority, minority, and women, and determining the percentages of firms that are minority and women-owned. And we found overall that one out of five firms, 20%, almost 20%, in the industries that we were looking at in the Portland metropolitan area, were minority and women-owned. So, you know, and we spoke, we reached 3,700 firms and performed, of those firms, more than 1,500 were interested in doing interviews with us about their availability for specific types of city and PDC projects. In the course of doing that, we were very aware that some of the firms that may be minority and women-owned were not, for one reason or another, and we actually looked into some of the reasons, were not included in the availability database, primarily because we attempted to reach them and they declined to do an interview, or after repeated attempts to reach them, Kevin, I recall it was four or five attempts, five attempts to reach an individual firm before we moved on, we were unable to reach them. And the same is true for majority-owned firms. So one of the key questions for us, because we're worried about percentages here, not the biggest list of minority-owned firms that we could provide, which I think might be a good thing for you all to do and still do. But because for the purposes of the disparity analysis, we needed to be able to say, we had an unbiased way of getting to a list of majority, minority, and women-owned firms, not knowing necessarily which firms were minority and women-owned when we started. The approach that we used was the court-approved methodology for coming up with the availability analysis and determining the benchmarks for the utilization. Now, if we had talked with, if we had been successful in having that much better a list, and everyone that we called was willing to talk to us and give us information, well, I think the percentage results would be different. And the answer is no, and we've done some analysis of this, again, as I mentioned, because we talked with so many firms, and we looked for if there was systematic bias in the firms that we were unable to reach, or the firms that were, for one reason or another, not interested in talking with us. And we did not find that we were disproportionately excluding minority and women-owned firms in doing that. So we took extensive efforts to reach firms, we knew that our process would not successfully reach each and every firm, whether that be white male-owned or minority or women-owned. We did this in very fair and objective process that I've testified about before, and that has been successful in upholding these types of programs and other venues. Other consultants have used approaches that are somewhat similar, where they did not reach every firm, but relied on Dun &amp; Bradstreet data as a base for this, and they were also successful in court. So of the available options for us to consider in the availability analysis, this was the most sound approach available to us.
If I could, Mayor, just follow up on one point. You had a number of people testify that they did not find their firms listed on an availability list for one portion of the work that you did. Have you gone back and considered, had they been included in the availability pool, the sort of denominator, whether that would have changed the finding of disparity, yes or no?
It would not have changed our findings, and that may be the most important point to make here, is, again, I think some of these questions are legitimate. However, we did not exclude minority, women-owned firms. We never counted a firm that we did not successfully contact as unavailable. We just didn't have the information for them to analyze in the study, and certainly would have if they had answered the availability questionnaire or availability interviews. But the key point here, to answer your question, excuse me, is, no, we found disparities where no programs applied. We consistently found that. Some of these disparities were very large, they were substantial disparities. If we had, I don't think we did undercount minority contractors more than majority contractors, but let's say we did. If we had been able to get more minority-owned firms into the availability analysis, the result would, the disparities would have been even larger than we had found where we were already finding disparities.
So you, okay, that last point was ingenious. So the Dun &amp; Bradstreet as the basis of the survey, literally, the Dun &amp; Bradstreet has been litigated and upheld?
The Dun &amp; Bradstreet as a source, and we, some consultants stopped there and say, you know, that is your availability, and what we believe is you actually have to call firms and talk to them about the types of work that they do, the sizes of projects that they bid on.
Right, okay. And we're in the lightning round of this process, by the way, so succinct answers are great.
So counsel for NAMCO testified that there were issues, in his opinion, about those that were certified as to whether or not they were in fact minority or a woman-owned.
That's also a very good question. The threshold question is, why include non-certified firms as minority and women-owned firms at all? And there's a few reasons. One is, the courts say you ought to do it. Second is, you can be discriminated against whether you're a certified firm or not a certified firm.
I'm not sure that was his point. I thought his point was questioning whether or not they were actually minority or women-owned.
We based the designation of ownership based on conversations with the ownership and control of the firm over the telephone with a firm owner or manager, and we took that information at face value. If they say they were a majority women-owned firm, we said that they were, women-owned and controlled, if they said they were, you know, more than 51% minority-owned, we took that information at face value. If they said that they were white male-owned, we took that information at face value as well.
Did you ask them if they were certified or not, or you?
You know, we looked at the certification issue, and we actually report separate statistics on utilization of certified firms in your report.
So the, I just want to, how bad was the disparity in the use of firms outside of our programs? If you could just sort of summarize, or in sort of the most summary of terms for the public?
The courts have said that if you can get within, you know, eight tenths of where you ought to be, if 100 is parity, and if you can get to 80, then you may not have a substantial disparity and it may not be actionable. All of the disparities that we've been discussing were substantial in the eyes of courts. On the scale of 0 to 100, 100 is parity, 0 is there's 0 utilization. One of the measures of how bad it was, was 2. So that's bad. And I hope, none of the people that commented today misunderstand the report to say that things are okay. Things are not okay.
Mayor, could I jump in with another related question? There's been a lot of focus on one number in the report, which is the availability figure of 1.9% for minority business enterprises in the city chart. But there hasn't been a lot of discussion today about the availability data on the PDC side, and yet that's where you found substantial disparity. In fact, in five of the, of the eight categories you looked at, you found disparity. So it, in my mind, raises the question, is there some difference in your methodology and your statistical analysis in what you did with the PDC data that is different than the analysis you did on the city data?
We used a consistent methodology using the same availability database. Now, PDC has different types of contracts and perhaps more subcontracting opportunities in the contracts we were examining. So availability for those PDC projects tended to be higher for minority, women-owned firms, which was particularly disturbing when you saw the extremely low actual utilization on PDC-sponsored projects.
Commissioner Fritz?
So we are not limited, the numbers, I understand that the concern's about the different numbers and availability and such, but your study shows, and I'm quoting, I found in numerous places where you say that there are substantial disparities. The information in this study strongly supports stronger city action to remove barriers to minorities and women business participation in its contracts, foster more contract opportunities for women and minorities, help build a strong minority and women-owned business community in the Portland area. There were substantial disparities in the utilization of minority businesses as prime contractors. Women were substantially underutilized as prime consultants on city construction-related professional services. So am I correct in reading this study as saying that, yes, you have found significant disparities, especially where we don't currently have any city programs?
No, we found substantial disparities where you do not have city programs.
So our programs are working to some extent, we can do better. I notice in Chapter 10 that you have a list I noticed in chapter ten that you have a list of things, a suggested to do list for us. We have four or five things in this, in the resolution that we want to get started on right now. All of those things are supported by the findings in your study.
Yes, as a starting point. And if, maybe some of the comments today were, if this is also the ending point, is that enough? And, and I think the study would say, no, those, that's a very good starting point, and you need to do more.
Thank you.
Did you review the audit by the auditor on this related topic, sheltered market?
Yes.
And your comments on the audit?
I think that's important information for the city to review when, when you're looking at kind of the next generation of the sheltered market program, if there is one.
So, let's see, the other issue raised is the, it's kind of a legal issue. Are you lawyers?
I pretend to be one from time to time. No.
So, maybe, Jim, you could come up and trade out with Ms. Moody, Mr. Van Dyke. So, the notion of race based or gender based affirmative programs within sub demographic categories, and potentially type of work categories, are those, have those been tested by the courts? So, the gentleman who talked about truck driver, that, that primes or subs will load up on flaggers and, and truckers, which has been a concern I've had. So, could, if there is a disparity that is shown or demonstrated in other categories, are we allowed to be, is it, is it your legal recommendation that we can be more proactive in some of those other areas? I don't know, I don't know that I've ever heard discussed what the courts have said in terms of dividing up the problem into units.
Okay. Well, in, in general, I'd want to work with our folks here at BBC, but I think their example of, and I'm looking to them to see if they're going to agree with me, on electricians, you know, where we saw a certain availability for electricians, and I think that would give us an opportunity on a project by project basis to take, take a look at those sorts of, of specific subcategories.
And I can also offer that the, a parallel program, the federal DVE program specifically asked you to look at areas where you only use minority contractors in those fields, if it's trucking, it could be trucking, or other, other types of trades, and exclude majority owned contractors. At the same time, you're also excluding those minority owned firms from other trades. So, you have unequal application of a program. You've hurt majority owned firms, perhaps unfairly in certain trades, but you also hurt minority owned firms by not making, making exerted effort to make all types of subcontracting available to those firms.
So, is that a yes or no?
That was a, it is an issue that, to have a narrowly tailored program, you need to look at, you can't just have all your minority business participation in trucking. That does no, that's, makes an unconstitutional program, one. It does no help for all the minority owned contractors out there.
So, can I interpret, can I interpret your answer?
So, you can look at specialty trades more than just construction as a whole. You can break this problem down in your implementation of any programs that you might have in the, in the future.
So, we might be able to do race based or gender based, more prescriptive efforts in these smaller categories of work.
In fact, I've seen programs where the calculations of a project goal actually includes kind of showing the work of, we have these types of trades, we think these, this amount of work in these trades for this project, and we estimate that there are a number of minority women owned firms that are certified, they're available for these trades, and we're seeking a prime contractor to go out and, and try to involve those firms.
And, and why doesn't the court recognize, or why doesn't the legal opinions or courts or what have you, AG's opinion, recognize the lack of availability as the basis for more affirmative, the ability for governments to make more affirmative, prescriptive efforts? Why is, I mean?
Mayor, I might just add, as a, just as a preview of the answer, I think it also, I think in part the answer to your question is, begs the question of which court? As the court has become more conservative, as the Supreme Court has become more conservative, they have closed the door further and further on these kinds of programs by raising the bar. That has not always been so, and that is in part why these nominations are so heavily contested. And there are people on the court who just are allergic to race based remedies, and therefore will, are looking for ways to strike down almost any program which addresses historical disadvantage. And their, and their view, in my opinion, is that the race starts today, and everyone's at the starting line together, and why look backward at anything that has historically disadvantaged people? And that is well documented in the courts and in the Supreme Court, but that is, that is a legal barrier.
So, if I could just, I appreciate that helps to add some context to my question, but, but on the more narrow piece of that issue, if, if we're a community with X number of, of females, and X number of African American Portlanders, and, but there's Y much less number of female African American, let's say, electricians, why is it that we are, why, how, based on what reasoning, I guess is why I'm asking, based on what reasoning has the court said you can't look at that when it comes to putting together programs like this? I mean, why is not a certain amount of responsibility allowed, placed on government for addressing the lack of availability in our own community? That's a very good question. Now, go back to my comments about, we did this availability analysis. Why, why did we do it the way we did it? We wanted to look at current availability and know what types of work and what sizes of jobs people bid on, and do that for majority, minority, women owned firms. That doesn't answer current availability, doesn't get to potential availability. And some courts have examined that issue and said, when you're implementing a program, not analyzing whether there's disparity or not, which was our charge, your charge when you're implementing a program, you can look at those issues and say, that, but for past discrimination, there would be more availability, and when we're setting our, our future benchmarks for how well we're doing as a community, we're going to take that into account, and those numbers are going to be higher than current availability. And on a project by project basis, can be, you know, you have a lot more flexibility there in the goals that you set.
So, would that mean for, just for example, if we had preferential, based on, you know, a category of work, training programs leading to a category of work that we can show not only a lack of utilization, but a lack of availability, that we can be more assertive in sort of that path of work and training, given the lack of availability and the lack of utilization?
There have been some courts, and some that have argued that very position. It, it makes sense to me. You never know in the future what it may, makes sense to a court, but there certainly is a lot of logic to that.
And, and Jim, I want to give you an opportunity to respond to the concern stated that, that the advice of the, and it hasn't always been you, there have been other attorneys, Medellin, Wessel, and others, but that the advice that the office of the city attorney to this city council, and past city councils, has been very conservative in terms of hemming us in and scaring us into not taking more risks in this area.
Well, it has, and just as a note, it's not been my experience that we've ever scared you folks very much at all. But, that said, I think if the message sounds conservative, it's because I'm simply relaying the holdings of a very, very conservative Supreme Court and judicial decisions that have emanated from that. That would not be my particular position on how I would come out on it, but I think what our obligation of our office is, is to lay out for you as honestly as possible what the legal lay of the land is. And, and that does not suggest that, as I think has been discussed here today, that we don't have opportunities to take remedial action, necessary remedial action to remedy the effects of discrimination, and, and I look forward to working with BBC in the future to trying to come up with ways to do that.
Any other discussion? I appreciate your patience.
All right. Thank you, and I want to thank you for your work, and I want to thank you for, I enjoyed the, I found useful the dialogue, and will, now that the baton has been passed, I will continue to rely on you for more. Carla, can you please call the vote?
Fish? Today marks the end of a long and dynamic process which began about two years ago. And if, as I suspect, the council accepts the report, then essentially our, the real work begins. And so, I don't want anyone to misjudge our will going forward to do the real work. And I think each of us, in our own way, are going to communicate that today. But I very much appreciate the way my friend Andrew Colas framed it. His concern is less with us than maybe a council in five years, but this council has a, has a chance to make a difference now. And our resolution commits to doing things immediately, and doing some additional things in a very prompt fashion, and everyone here has the right to hold us accountable to that. There's been few assignments that I've had on the council that have been more rewarding, in part because of the people I've had a chance to work with. And I want to particularly thank all the members of the Citizens Advisory Group. I attended every meeting, and remained for the entire meeting, and I found that every time I attended a meeting, I learned something new. I'm not personally someone who has a lot of experience in the front lines of, of, of either the, the professional services side or the labor side. I was educated through the dynamic conversations as we went along. And what always impressed me was the tough questions that were asked of the consultants, and the level of engagement. There's a number of people I want to specifically thank. Again, all the members of the advisory group for their service and, and the enormous amount of time they put into this, and it would be, it would be unfair just to characterize the time as the time we spent face to face, because there was enormous amount of time spent outside of the meetings, reading materials, commenting, attending the public forum and the like, so I heartfelt thank you. I want to thank in particular two people, Maurice Roming and Andrew Colas, who spent a lot of time in the last month with me on the phone in my office, in other ways, through my team, walking us through the concerns they had. And while I deeply respect some of the reservations they still have, because they've made them forcefully, and I respect their perspective, I also don't want to diminish in any way the, the impact they've already had on this process, keeping us on the right track, the substantial work that was done, and was alluded to, and the rewriting of the executive summary, and I think the elevating of the, of the quality of the public debate, the understanding of our work. I want to thank the BBC team for listening and for engaging us. They were selected through a competitive contracting process over which we had no particular say, other than ratifying the results of the committee's recommendation. They did the work with a lot of support along the way, and at the end, questions have been raised about methodology and implementation and other things, but I suspect no matter what report issued, we'd be having a variation of this discussion, because these issues are really fundamental, and they provoke great passion. And we can adjust some disparity findings here or there, or change a word there, but let's remember, we're talking about history here. And no amount of history, particularly history in a community where so many people have experienced barriers to opportunity, can be, can be accurately reflected in one document. And perhaps sometimes we thought this document would do too much, and we, we held it out as, as perhaps trying to do too much. There is substantial documented findings of disparity in this report. And that's not to say that the city's efforts to this point have failed, or PDC has failed, it just says we haven't gotten the job done. And there's a substantial roadmap that's been provided to us to do better and more going forward, and you'll hear from all of us the will to do that. So, the hard work begins. It has been an honor to be part of this process. And what I have learned is that whatever differences we have about any detail, what we share is the passion and the commitment to remove barriers to equal opportunity. And perhaps it is discouraging that in 2011, we're still talking about those barriers. But it, it may be that it is a lifetime's work and not something where we can ever be complacent. And so, I commit to doing my part through my bureaus and with my colleagues, and it's not lost on me that one conspicuous area of disparity that's been identified here is the PDC sponsored contracts. That's where PDC was not the owner, but was an investor. And a number of those contracts have now migrated to the city, and a number of those will be administered by the Portland Housing Bureau going forward. So, we, we have a big role, and Andrew Colas, who's the chair of our P-hac, has a big role, and I know you'll hold us accountable for meeting the new goals that we have set for our bureau. So, thank you all, and thanks to those who spent time. I know we asked you to do double duty today. Many of you testified this morning at PDC, and then here this afternoon. It's been extremely valuable. We've made an important record, and I thank you for your time. Aye.
Leonard?
I was particularly interested when Commissioner Fish was asking the council representing NAMCO if he and NAMCO believed that the methodology contained in the disparity study was flawed. And so, I expected an attorney like response to a very technical question, and his response was, after hesitating for a moment, you know what we expect Commissioner Fish's leadership from you all. Now, that would be an astute observation from anybody, but coming from an attorney, I was particularly impressed that, that he could on the fly distinguish between the nuanced answers he could have given, and really the larger message, which was, as I took it, the, the disparity study notwithstanding, there are leadership decisions that you all are going to be required to make, to make sure that people are treated fairly and equitably when they come in to get a city contract. And I thought that that summed up the entire report and the hearing perfectly, and that siliquet between Commissioner Fish and him. So, for me, I'm less interested in the debate over the nuances of the disparity study than I am on the verity of the resolution that we are now going to vote on, and particularly where we've identified issues to help correct disparities, such as bonding, insurance, pre-qualification, capacity building, access to cap, capital, and other systemic obstacles to the success of minority and women owned businesses in Portland, to take a direct quote from the resolution. So, I agree that this is a first step. I think Commissioner Fish has done exemplary work. I appreciate the effort of everybody involved in this, and the passion that goes with that. My sympathies to the city attorney for being the bearer of bad news. I've been on your side many times in delivering bad news and being criticized for that. Don't kill the messenger. I also understand that, that, that message as well, but I appreciate your candid direction to us, and I think it's been helpful, and I'm happy to vote aye.
Fritz? Thank you, Commissioner Fish, for your leadership on this project, and for your commitments, inclusion of the community in every step of the way. Thank you to the consultants, BBC, for your good work. It's a massive project, but very readable, and I appreciate the recommendations that you've pulled out for us. And also thanks to the advisory group who have done stalwart work, and, and to each one of you here today for coming and staying for three hours and more, to show how much you care about this and that you are with us. We do see this, and many folks testified about, we need to do this together, and it, it takes all of us, and I was greatly heartened by the encouragement that you are willing to acknowledge that, yes, there have been four hundred years of disparities in this country, maybe more, and it's going to take us a while to fix them, and we need to make huge strides. And I'm committed over the next five years, I hope, to doing my part within my bureaus in every contract that comes to council, and, and giving Christine Moody the authority to do the work that she has been doing. She's already demonstrated above and beyond commitment to inclusion of women and minorities in every contract that comes to council, and, and she's several steps ahead of the questions that I ask, and is always searching for new ways to do what's legal or defense. ways to do what's legal or defensible and then to push the limits as much as we possibly can. My chief of staff, Tom Bizo, pulled out 15 recommendations from Chapter 10 of the massive document, and I know that there are many, many more. So let's be really clear. This study shows that there are huge disparities in Portland. It shows that we've made some gains in the, by the programs that we've already been trying, and it shows that we need to do better. And I am committed to doing that, and I appreciate your partnership. Aye.
Adams?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner Fish for enthusiastically accepting the assignment that I bestowed upon him. This is the controversial, difficult, legal, political, policy project that you excel at, and I appreciate it very much. I also want to thank the Citizen Advisory Committee for your willingness to devote the long hours. And I want to thank, on behalf of, reiterate, on behalf of Commissioner Fish and myself, thanks to Jeff Baer, Kristi Moody, Annette Palmer, Skip Newberry, John Jackley, and Jim Blackwood and Jim Van Dyke. Thanks to our consultants, BBC, as well. Because I've been around for the 1995 study report that showed that the city's efforts at that time were making no discernible difference, I'm happy to hear that there is some discernible difference between where we have made an effort versus where we have not. I think that this is a good roadmap to tell us how we need to improve upon, sort of the, the beachhead of modest success and where we need to prioritize in terms of those areas that we're just not cutting it. I think an uncomfortable truth is that bureau managers and purchasing agents in the city are going to have to give up some of their power. I think they're going to have to be willing to have more oversight from somebody in order to make sure that we have a more consistent approach to this and that, because we have so many different project managers in the city, some have more experience in working in this fashion of, of providing more equality and practical opportunities than others. I think that's the backdrop to this, at least that's sort of the bureaucratic backdrop to this. In terms of my commitment, because I, I know this issue to a degree, and I look forward to spending more time with the consultants, I think there's a lot more we can do. And you heard a little bit about sort of the sparks of some of my hope in the Q and A back and forth between the consultant and myself. I would encourage everyone to not look at this as monolithic, that it's all the same, that all contracts are the same, that all projects are the same, that the city is the same as it was once, and that the community is the same. We have opportunities here. Because of the complexity of this issue, though, our response will probably be reasonably complex as well. And that's a lesson that I learned from this. It should be appropriately complex in terms of what we can do. We didn't have this kind of information or this kind of detail in 1995 to justify looking at subcategories of anything. But you heard in the Q and A, as we were wrapping up here, we do now, and we're going to pursue it. So, thank you. Aye. We're adjourned.